Hello, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting, October 2nd, 2019. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, you had something that we just, gosh, this is an excellent point today. So this meeting is being recorded but not live.
Correct.
And around the table, Ed Gibson, Chris Falls, Matt Rowland, Rainie Groden, Francine Tishman, John Martin, and Kathy Ingram. So first thing is opening up quotes and possible award of contracts to the Edwards Public Library roof replacement.
Correct.
And I forgot to bring the letter over, so I got a paper cut and Jerry's ringing all night.
You want some help, Oakley?
First one is from RH Roofing LLP.
Where are they out of it?
East Hampton, Mass.
When did these?
Do you want me to fill in the spreadsheet? Do you want me to fill in the spreadsheet as you say it, or?
Fine, fine. Ask me a tough question.
Two weeks ago, I think it was.
Probably about four weeks ago.
Okay.
Actually, yeah, August 23rd.
Can I ask you another tough question? What was our estimate of the cost?
What did I use for estimate, or what is the budget?
Okay.
I never put out the budget figure. I used $38,000 for an estimate. Our budget is 44.
Okay, so that would be less than.
This is CPA money, right?
No, this is capital fund.
Capital fund.
I think you were thinking of the barn for maybe CPA money.
Yeah.
This is the life.
Oh, yes, I was thinking of the Corner Park Pavilion. That was.
Did we have any alternates, or was it just?
We have one add alternate for a different type of drip edge, and that is $2,041.87.
Okay.
The completed specification Form A. Signed labor harmony and OSHA.
How many of these are in?
Six. And signed references.
Do we answer a bid bond, or no?
Uh, I think there should be about five percent. It's normal. Is it protocol to do this in meeting? I can decollete this up and move ahead.
What do you think, Ed?
What?
Do I just tally this up when we move along, or are there just things that, what would you rather go along with us?
It's supposed to be a public bid, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I asked.
You don't want.
I do not see it with this. Do we ask for one?
Yes. There's no bid bond.
No bid bond. Next one is from JD Ribbiton Company, Springfield, Mass.
They talk about sealed bids, so they're serious, aren't they?
Just a second time. Do you want me to take that spreadsheet? You can just call out the numbers and everything, and I can just check them off to kind of get this going a little.
There you go.
Otherwise, we're all going to be staring at you.
I know, I got a pen.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah, that's fine.
I just don't know if I can read left-handed writing, John.
You know, you're talking to a five out of six.
I know. I know I'm the rarer one here.
Francine's right. I'm with you, Ed. We're on the same team.
Well, that means you're all more creative than, I guess, Francine.
No, and I'm right-minded.
Speak for yourself.
Or out of left field. I'm not going to say that.
Okay. JD Ribbiton bids $73,750. The add alternate drip edge is $500. Why are you still writing it if he is? Because you're folk force of habit. Signed tax compliance. Signed labor and harmony. I love you. Thanks. Just smack me. Signed quote Form A. Has the references.
You know, the other thing is a spec form appendix A.
Yes, and that's completed.
Okay, so that's all that works. It doesn't say bid bond here.
Maybe we didn't. Usually have it in there.
Yeah. It's more important that a performance bond once.
Next one is from La Rochelle Construction Inc., South Hampton, Mass. Do this, and then go right in. I don't know how many square that roof is.
That would be the specs of.
La Rochelle's bid is $36,400. See what's going to write. It has the completed appendix A specifications. Add alternate one is $0.
Zero they didn't bid, or they're not charging us anything?
They're not charging us. They're saying it's the same as the regular one that we would put in there. Signed labor and harmony. Signed tax compliance. Contractor's references.
Quote Form A is the last one.
Yeah, that's here. And they've actually got the addendum number one and the bid bond included. And I'll just say it in case there's any question later on. Their price per sheet for replacement of any rotted sheeting or decking is $100 per sheet.
How do we list that in there as an alternate, or?
Hmm?
How do we list that in there? Do we ask for that?
Yes, I always ask.
So you have some unit prices?
Yeah, ahead of time, exactly. Next one is from P.O. Their bid is $48,000.
Even?
Even. Add alternate one is $350. We have the signed specification in quote form. Their price per sheet for replacement of any rotted sheeting or decking is $120. We have the tax compliance certification, the OSHA training certification, the contractor references, and the bid bond. Bless you. Bless you again.
Thank you.
Next one is from JJS Universal Construction Company from Dudley, Mass.
Why do we jerk this?
Their bid is $47,000. The alternate one is $300. We have the addendum number one with it. We have the signed tax compliance, the signed labor harmony, the contractor references, and the bid bond.
They're paying us.
Cashews check for the bid bond. Addendum number one is here. Appendix A specifications is here. Their bid is $56,000. Add alternate one is $1,000. The price per sheet for any rotted sheeting or decking is $100. Signed tax compliance certification, signed labor harmony and OSHA training, and contractor references.
Okay, quote Form A.
Should be per of this. Yes.
We've got a good cluster around our budget area. Two way up. The rest are in there.
Yep. So the low bidder would be La Rochelle Construction, $36,400. That is within the budget. I would make a recommendation that the board vote to award this on the condition that their references checked out. I will tell you that I have previous experience in another town with this particular company, and they were very good to us back when they did the town hall roof, so I have nothing but good things to say about them. But if you would like to make that motion and vote on it, I'll follow up and check their references again if everything checks out. I'll write up the contract for it and ask you to stop and do the signatures. I will tell you, and it doesn't say it in there, that I had to keep, Justin from La Rochelle had asked, didn't make any difference if they couldn't do it until next spring. He said he was going to put something in the packet about that. I don't see anything, so maybe they've got some free time to do it this year, but.
And what about the others?
The others didn't make any, you know, none of them made any specifics as to when they could actually fit it in.
And can we wait?
I don't think we should wait.
Did we give them a desired time to get it done?
The issue is going to be that we did not give them a timeline in the request for quotes, that it had to be done by a particular time, so this would still be the lowest qualified bidder.
But there's a reasonable expectation. I think we could go with this.
Well, and let me throw another curve at you. The next lowest bidder is above our budget, so we wouldn't be doing it anywhere.
How much is the next lowest?
Forty-seven thousand.
I thought there were two that were in the thirties.
No.
Each roofing was not 38?
Forty-seven and 48.
Yep. Okay.
But would you possibly, if the first one didn't check out, could you negotiate with the second one to come down within our budget?
No.
Not possible.
Not possible.
So I'll make a recommendation where you award it to the lowest bidder of record if something, the references check out, and that they can do it in a timely manner?
I would say, I would like, I mean, I would say before the snow flies, and then see what they say.
Well, timely, I think, is something that gives Ed some leeway to go back.
And if you want to do it before the snow flies, and they can't, we're going out to bid again, which guarantees springtime.
I'll second your motion, and then we'll let them talk.
Yeah. That includes. Just introduce yourself.
I'm Convy Stahl from Ford.
I don't think there's any microphones there. This is the only one.
That bid includes the asphalt roof also.
It includes both the asphalt shingles and the EPDM rubber roofing on the four corners.
I just want to make sure because we finished it before. We want to make sure that we did.
Convy, I sent you the document, you didn't read it?
I read it. But I've just given the disparity, you know, there's quite a range here in the bids. I just want to make sure.
Yep. No, and that's why I put out the specification sheet, and they have to answer all yes or no, and they have to list any deviations from that, which they did not do.
I mean, it may not, I mean, we go like last winter, it may not snow a lot until February or so.
I'll take a vote on that, Convy.
That infamous October.
So it sounds like we all want them to push to get it done this year.
Yeah, but let's not box ourselves in by a.
In the calendar year.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, we want to avoid having to go back after bid.
Yep.
Or could you negotiate with the next?
You can't negotiate.
You can't negotiate.
Like Ed says, we have to go back out.
Yep.
And I don't think we could cancel it either, because it's not that far off the budget. In my experience with the AG's office, unless it's a spectrum apart, they say, no, you've got to figure it out, you know? What's our budget again, Ed?
Forty-four.
And that's 47?
Thirty-six, four.
Our budget, though, is?
Forty-four.
And what's the next highest?
Forty-seven, so, yeah. And at that point, you're pushing it if you're trying to find extra money, and you haven't built in any contingency. At least this way, we've got about $7,000 in contingency if something pops up.
Right, I mean, if we had to do it, we could fight $3,000, I suppose, if people wanted to do it, but that's a lot of money to lose.
Is everybody comfortable voting?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So you all just work with them on saying?
Try to get them in there.
As soon as possible.
Yep.
I mean, the contingency might be that extra money between 36 and 44. If there'd be, and they can't do it in the spring, there may have to be some interim repairs.
One question, if you got the EDPM roof and you got the shingle roof, is there one that is leaking and one that could possibly go to spring?
I mean, there is, we could go through another spring. I mean, we had some patching done this year. I don't, I don't, they did the roof, it came in, I'm being honest, but I, so I would only ask that we try to do.
I think that's the point.
I agree with the extra point of view. I mean, they could get in there and find something that's really rotted or something, and so it's better to have a little extra money in case we run into a problem from the other way around.
Thank you very much, Ed.
Thanks, Convy. I appreciate it.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
I love you, Convy.
Okay, next appointment is Erin Towcher to the Greenway Committee, term due expires June 30th, 2022. Everybody get the paperwork on this voluntary request? I don't believe he's here, right?
No.
Okay. Nice letter. Definitely is a good candidate for the position.
Thank you, Chuck.
What would you have to do?
He's a financial manager. He's at UMass.
Yes, yep. Heads it down.
Do you need a motion?
I move. I move to approve Erin Towcher to the Greenway Committee.
I'll second it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This reminds me, did you get your appointments left?
I got it, so I'm going to go down and.
This is a joint meeting with the Board of Health, appoint a resident voter to the Board of Health, fill vacancy until the next election, although you don't have a quorum.
Charlie?
Shelley O'Call, Senate Kine Circle, acting chair for the Board of Health. We are, I'm actually here so we can maybe move forward with voting for the vacant seat on our board. The Board of Health appointed Becky Dubay. Unfortunately, Sharon's not here, and I had emailed Ed and Maureen yesterday. I had recently found out that Sharon is going to be resigning due to work in school. And then I just found out Monday that she was on vacation, which was a complete surprise to me after we had spoke on the phone, her and I, regarding tonight's appointment. So in saying that, I just would like to move forward and be able to get this. As soon as we get her resignation letter, formal letter, then we will be posting for the new seat on the board.
So that's unfortunate, because this is our second meeting to have a joint appointment with the Board of Health, and for the second time, it didn't happen in terms of having a quorum. So who would like to ask Shelley any questions, or you have the write-up on both candidates that have expressed an interest in being on the Board of Health? What would you like to ask of Shelley?
I guess I'd like to hear from both of them, since they're both here, and give their reasons why and their experience.
All right, great. Okay. Rebecca, would you like to start?
So actually.
Just introduce yourself, say your name, where you live, because there's no mic in the back of the room.
There you go. We'll respond by our own.
Hi, everybody. Rebecca Dubay, 104 Crookville Road in Southampton. So I'm interested in the position. As most of you know, I'm actively involved in the community, in the Rite Aid now, soon to be Walgreens in Southampton. I've been here for about 13 years within the community, lived here for about six years. I have four children who are very active in the school. I have a husband who takes a lot, a lot of his time, a lot of his energy to various softball, mostly softball, actually. And then as far as the Board of Health goes, it's just an active investment of mine. I've started at the age of 16, and I'm doing healthcare for my entire life. So I do continuing education credits, you know, monthly, sometimes weekly, required to do them by law, at least 20 of them a year. I got to be honest, most of the time I do about 40 of them. Healthcare is forever and will always be changing. It's just something that, you know, we have to kind of be on top of. I have access to a lot of information that the public can use, and just, you know, just like to be involved.
I know when I was on the Board of Health, it was a good learning curve, because I had, as a nurse, I'm pretty familiar with communicable diseases and all of that.
Right.
But it was a huge amount of information relative to soils, sanitation, restaurant inspection, pools, mosquitoes. I mean, it's fascinating, but it's also a huge amount of information.
Right.
So I just wondered if you could speak to your background and any of the other issues, because Title V is huge on the Board of Health, sanitation, transfer station. So do you have the experience with any of those topics?
Aside from building my own house, not really.
Okay.
It's kind of a learning curve in itself, but no, I don't actually have any experience in sanitation or mosquitoes, other than using deep below.
In my five and a half years, honestly, I haven't really had much of a board, much of a board that has all of, all the diversities that we're looking for myself. I had a science background, and I learned everything from just being on the board. And I went to a couple of trainings, I've done, you know, I went out on sites, works with people doing soil evaluations. I learned that way. I would go and I met with somebody in Northampton that lives from town. He showed me how to do a set of plans. I would go on restaurant inspections, I became certified. You know, just, there's a lot of things that I have grown to know. You know, we had a gentleman on our board, Jeff Dugess, and he was, you know, he was more into the soils and all that stuff, but he didn't know anything about a restaurant or the medical or anything like that. So I've never seen one person come on that has, you know, it's pretty rare when you get somebody that knows everything that goes on the Board of Health.
Well, it's nice when you have three members that they can complement each other.
Exactly.
When you have somebody who has the soils, and then you have somebody with a health background, you can also have something that has.
I agree.
And confidence reality is also huge. You know, you're dealing with communicable diseases and disease reporting, and also housing violations and conditions, so that's just, I find that to be incredibly important.
It's nice when you have an entire board that knows a little bit of all those things you need, yeah. And Sharon is going to be a great loss, because she was nice to have, because she knew a lot of those things.
I know she did.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Rebecca?
I don't think so.
Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you, guys.
And then Charlie, can I do it? Charlie?
Don't hit me. Don't hit me. It's a good thing you've got witnesses.
Summarize your background.
I was originally on the Board of Health in Southampton way back, probably the 1980s, when the dump was a dump, and it was a burning dump. I have moved through this career of public health to the point of being health agents in East Hampton, being eventually the district health officer for Commonwealth for some 18 years. That made me the ranking public health official for Western Massachusetts. Part of my task was to train local boards of health on how to operate as boards of health. This Saturday, I will be at the Blue Bonnet Diner with the Mass Association of Health Boards, running a seminar on how running a seminar on how you operate a Board of Health in relationship to fees and income and that kind of stuff. My background is environmental sciences. I have been trained through the Center for Disease Control. I even hold a fellowship with the Public Health Institute for the Commonwealth. I was a manager, Level Five, in the Commonwealth, which meant that I oversaw up to 50 people. And I bring a very broad-brush approach to public health here for a small town like Southampton. It is my hometown, I've been here all my life. As you all have seen, I have dedicated a lot of time to Southampton in many different roles. And I thought it'd be refreshing to go back to my roots and be on the Board of Health in Southampton to help Shelley and move the town forward with the projects and issues. My familiarity with disease control reaches to the point where I was charged with bringing the epidemiologist in and pulling medical records at different doctors' offices because of concerns of misdiagnosis of patients. I've been in probably every realm you could think of in public health, and yes, I do have a soil license. I sat on the roundtable committee that drafted Title V originally.
Thanks, Charlie, what questions do you have?
I don't know if it's relevant, I'm trying to think of what you did. You just held a training class on your farm for something, what was that?
Yesterday's training class was all for the new engineers and Board of Health members to learn about soils for septic systems. Every six months, my farm hosts this training in cooperation with the University of Massachusetts and the New England Water Pollution. We have, we actually, this year, actually have USGS here from the federal government working with them, teaching soils for on-lot septic systems.
And Nicole took that class, a bachelor, didn't she?
Yes, she did. Anybody that's gotten a license, has gone through my farm, doing it or another.
This is a question for Shelley, actually. I know when Nicole was recently, not, probably a year or two ago, was we hired as the health agent. There was a lot of concerns about whether or not we really need a health director and a health agent. There were also concerns about her having a bachelor's degree in farming, or some aspect of farming for UNH, but that she didn't have any of the certifications, and she had no experience being a health agent. And at the time, it was sort of promised that she would go through the steps of getting different licenses. Could you speak to what the health agent, like, right now...
What licenses she's gotten?
Well, between the health director and the health agent that we currently have, what do they have for certifications and licenses?
I don't have that in front of me, I don't know exactly how come at all the details of which they both have. Nicole's been working really hard last year to get different certifications, and she's done very, very well, and she's met all the goals that we've actually looked for her to meet. But all of the ones that she's actually got, I don't have them written down in front of me.
Okay, I'm just wondering how far off...
But I can get that for you.
...is she from what would be required or recommended as a health agent?
Okay.
Do you know that, Charlie?
It all depends on your classification of town and your need. Public health is such a broad scope. The town of this size, you're probably looking at on-lot septic food service...
Soil evaluator?
Well, it's on-lot septic.
Okay.
You're looking at food service, and you're looking at housing stock. Those would be your primary. And your secondary would probably be your disease control and surveillance.
So she does, she has a lot of those. I do not think she has much of the housing. I don't know if she's got all the certifications for the housing, but Jerry has that.
What about the emergency planning? There were modules that were required of all Board of Health members for the...
She's done those that are required of all of us.
That's getting off-topic, or...
Yeah, she's done those. We actually, as a board members, we've had to do those ourselves. So yes, those are all done. Those were actually required from her right from the get-go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking these questions is because right now, we have a one-person Board of Health. We have a verbal word that someone's resigning, and we have another person that already resigned.
Yeah.
So I would like to know what expertise right now exists in the Board of Health relative to what the requirements are for the Mass Association of Health Boards.
So you're talking about myself?
You and other people on the board, like, I'm just...
Well, there's no one else on the board, because we have Sharon.
Right, right.
Sharon is the health agent for South Hadley, or health director for South Hadley. So she's got all the diversity of them. I'm certified. I have, I'm not certified with doing septic design plans, but I have been trained for them. Actually, Bree that left us and Josh, they were not certified, they were actually just trained. I think Bree did take her soil certification through us. No, she did, because she was only here for six months. She was going to be doing that, but she had not done that yet. But I'm certified, so I'm allowed to go out on food inspections if I need to. I can read a set of plans. If I have to, I can go ahead and file the format to do that. What we have done in the past is when we have someone like me who would do a set of plans, I would be presenting it in front of the board, and I would have to get the board's approval before I would sign it. But Jerry's fully able to do that, Nicole's fully able to do that. There's a lot of things that Nicole can do out in the field that she's really eligible for and certified for, yeah. But as a board, you don't have to be certified to do those. A board member's don't have to be certified to go out and do that. That's what we pay them to do. We were on, I'm on the board to oversee what they do, to make, bring up discussions, just like your board does. Things that come up, we don't discuss it, we vote on it. Complaints that come into the office, things like that. Those are things that I actually went out and did on my own, just because I was interested in them, and I wanted to be able to help out my department, because there's been many times where we were left without a health agent in the past, and I didn't have the certifications to be able to go out and do that.
Which is exactly why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I took that on myself to do that, so that I could actually help as a backup. Then went and got certified, certified to help, because we had, at the time, we had a couple restaurants in town that were in really bad shape, and Jerry was not able to go out with Nicole. Or Ben went out with Jerry in one incident, because we didn't have Nicole at the time. And, you know, it was just a nice, have a nice person as a backup at that time.
So if I'm following your train of thought, is the most qualified people that we... The more qualified people that we have on the board, the better it is for us as a town.
Well, that's every, I think that's every board. Every board would do really well if it had a diversified group of people.
We're just kind of answering Charlie's question, that's the sense I got.
Yeah, yeah.
What other questions, any other questions for Charlie?
Just go on. It looks like you've got lots of licenses and certificates, and several of those go back ways, back into the 90s and earlier. So I guess I'm just curious, how, in your various duties, and I know you're on various other committees as well, how have you kept these up to date? Or what is up to date for you that would apply to this position in terms of licenses and certifications?
Well, this position is basically an overseer as a board member. It doesn't require licenses to be on the Board of Health. It requires permits or licenses to be the agent, the director, that kind of stuff. What I'm bringing is institutional knowledge, not only of public health in the arena, but also the town of Southampton. With that, sitting on the board, I can help facilitate things when we get into debates on situations that need to be addressed, where the director or the agents looking for direction from the board, because it needs to be basically argued out as to what is necessary. My licenses and credentials, as I use them, I presently am hired as a consultant by a number of different communities off and on, Beckett included back in the day, for situations. I usually go to the nastiest of the nastiest situations in those communities.
And we have called Charlie in the past, and he's been more than welcome, happy to come in and help us out with any discussions or things that have come up in the past that we were, you know, unclear about. And you've come over many times and helped us out.
It's tough, it's tough. Have you called, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Charlie? Thanks very much, Charlie.
Your questions were really good. Your questions were very good.
Are there other questions for Shelley? And just a reminder, this appointment is only until the town election in May. Any other questions?
And then what, the position's up for reelection?
It's up for reelection.
And so won't Sharon's, will be the same?
There'll be an interim appointment.
There'll be an interim appointment, yes.
Yeah, I mean, assuming she gives a resignation, I mean...
Right now, she...
I assumed that she was gonna have it in last week, and I'm very shocked that it wasn't in, because I just found out she was on vacation. So I was really shocked that it wasn't already in. But I did make a call on Monday, and it was not in. I know I had received anything yet to the town clerk's office, so...
I've been very concerned about the Board of Health for a while, for this very reason, in terms of just communication, in terms of two people leaving at one time, in terms of having two people in the office that may not have the qualifications that you need for a Board of Health office, for two people going out and doing the same thing at the same time. So I have a lot of concerns about...
That really doesn't happen that often. Honestly, and I know you do, Maureen, and I have to say that in my five-and-a-half years, there was two board members in our department before Jerry and Ron originally. And our department runs more efficiently now than it did five years ago. And I know that because I was one of the board members that was getting called daily by the health agent that we had at the time, because she wasn't qualified to do any of the work that was there, because she was just out of college. And we could not get anybody. We had two people, it was Bree and somebody else who I basically just got...
Ron Lauren?
No, 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 it wasn't Ron Lawton. But I basically just got, all I got was a blank paper with a name and number on there, and telling us to give her a call. It had no resume, it had nothing attached to it. I tried calling her myself. I basically, I emailed her, I got nowhere, I got no information off of her. Lisa was on the board at the time as a chair, and the reason why she stepped down was because she was notoriously getting called every single day and had to be pulled from her job to come in and assist Adam and Bree in the work that they were doing. And I was the chair for two years, and I barely ever got calls. And honestly, the only time I ever got a call of a problem, and it was the political part of it. And, but the office ran very efficient, very efficient. And we did, I felt like I was doing Board of Health stuff when I was going in at my meetings. You know, I just feel like we do have very well-educated people working in our department right now than we have had a year, in previous years. So...
I think you've done an outstanding job, but right now, in terms of, it's been very difficult for the Select Board to have a liaison to committee. You meet the exact same night, meet in meetings...
And the reason we did that...
Let me finish, please. Meetings are posted 48 hours in advance. You don't post any minutes, you say that it's confidential. You meet in the office downstairs, you don't meet in any public meeting room, and you don't videotape any of your meetings. So I think there's been a difficulty with communication. I think you've done an outstanding job, you're holding up the department right now. But I'm just saying, I think that there've been problems with the Board of Health in terms of the requests that come to the Select Board and to the town. When I was on the Board of Health, we had a health agent that gave us a log of an incredible amount of information, and there was all kinds of education going on. There are so many public health topics right now, from vaping to mosquitoes to opioids, to you name it. And I just feel like, I was always very informed about what was going on. And sometimes I feel like there's been too much focus. When you look at the minutes from the beginning of this year, they say almost nothing in the minutes. You know, so you're doing a lot of work, but it's not being reflected anywhere where anybody could see it. And I just think that there's a tremendous amount of issues in this town, well, in public health. And I just feel like there's a lot of focus towards the employees of the Board of Health and not to the public health. You serve the public health.
Yeah. The reason why we actually have our meetings on Tuesday was because when Lisa was on the board, she, we always met on the Tuesday that the Board of Selectmen met, was because if there was ever an issue that came up, we were able to go down there and discuss it with the Select Board that evening. That is exactly why. We changed it, we actually, we had Ben on the schedule, and Ben actually, we actually had our meetings on different nights, because we had to work around Ben's schedule, which was fine. When Ron was back as a health agent way back when, he asked us to bring them back to Tuesdays, because he felt like it was important. And when he was on the board, it worked, he thought it worked. So that's why we tried to do back on Tuesdays. I have no problem, I can go, most nights I'm available. I go around my board's schedule. I'm probably one of my only board members at the time, besides Sharon, who didn't have, I have older children, I don't need to be around, work around their schedule. So I'm very flexible. I have no problem coming up and meeting and having it televised, no problem at all. When Charlie was on the Select Board, I remember that he would ask us once a month, every department once a month, to come in and give a report. I thought that was a great idea, because there were some nights where the liaison wasn't able to make it to our meeting. But also, I still think it's great the liaison can come to our meeting, but I think it's great that once a month, that the departments, every department, comes and gives, you know, just a discussion of what's going on in that department for that month. I think that's a great idea. That way, everyone is on the same page, and if they have questions, they know what's going on. So I have, I'm open to any of that stuff.
Great.
I thought that was great when we did that.
Great.
A quick question, sorry. Did I hear that the Board of Health office is not open on Thursdays? Am I remembering that wrong?
Yes, the Board of Health allowed her to lock, to...
So, yes, so in the past, previously, we were getting really bombarded with a lot of things, and we weren't able to, Jerry was not able to get a lot of desk work done. And so she was falling behind, and we were asking her for some things, like, we wanted a template of all the things that were going on, like, certain numbers of all, like, food inspections, Title V, things that forced her to take more time off from her regular activities. So Ben had said, you can close the office to get that work done.
It just doesn't seem like a community-friendly thing.
So the office is open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah.
And it's closed Thursday, Friday? So if somebody has a plan or something...
So someone, they can always call the office, and I guarantee you that Jerry would be more than happy to meet with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was...
The Board of Health voted for her to be able to close the office on Thursday?
If needed, yeah. Yeah.
Doesn't seem user-friendly, that's all I heard there.
Yeah, about serving the public is the point I was making, yeah.
But also, as the new person on the board, I started by learning a little bit about what was going on with various committees in town, and reading old-town reports in various, you know, minutes and meetings. And it struck me that the Board of Health were not findable. And so I didn't understand why they were not...
So they're all actually in the clerk's office. They're just not, they're just not always on, and I, from my, this is going back a couple of years ago, when I talked to town council, they had said that legally, we have to, legally, they have to be in the town clerk's office, but we don't have to post them. And our problem at the time was, we were running out of hours a week to be able to take the time to be able to post them continuously. So we, I said, well, my whole main concern is making sure that we are legally getting them into the town clerk's office, if that's where they have to be.
So they are there.
And they are there, yes.
It sounds like a couple of places where you need extra help, or really clerical help.
Right.
Posting minutes, tracking, you know, counting the data in terms of...
Yeah, I mean, they don't have, nobody's, from my understanding, it doesn't have to be posted, the minutes, but they need to be all in the town clerk's office. It is nice to have those minutes posted, but we just haven't been able to have the, you know, the extra time to be able to do that.
Is that accurate, Ed, do you know? That they don't have to be posted? I thought they had to be posted.
They have to be in the town clerk's office.
But I understand, the difficulty is in posting, the time to post?
Taking the time to post it on top of everything else that we have to do, yeah.
Because, I mean, I used to post minutes for open space, it's literally, you just upload them to the website.
Yeah, you scan them and you upload them. It's maybe a two-minute process for each one.
I mean, that's something that I'm more than happy to take on as a, you know, board member. I don't, I don't have a problem with that, so...
Yeah, it doesn't seem like, I mean, that the time is typing up the minutes. Posting it is a click. Lucy wanted to say something.
I just had a question, is there a Board of Health liaison on the Select Board?
Me.
Oh, okay, it's you.
It used to be Matt, and then as of the last election, it's me.
Okay, and just another thing about meeting in the office. The assessors do meet in their office, too, just, I don't know...
Yeah, I know there's other departments that meet in their office.
There are some departments that... And I do have the minutes after every meeting.
Yeah. I got a copy of all the minutes from the beginning of the year. There was one meeting, I think, there's long gaps with the meeting, and they're at that, there aren't that many meetings this year, and I think one meeting, you didn't have a quorum.
Was that something, Lucy could post, if it's a couple clicks?
I mean, I don't know, that'd have to get to the direction of the Board of Health.
I don't really think it's Lucy's job to have to do that. I think it's, you know, something that, you know, as a board member, you know, if my department doesn't have the time, you know, it's just no different than me becoming certified. You know, to help out.
But I guess saying you don't have the time as a board member is too many tasks. It doesn't, you know, sorry. It sounds kind of shallow there, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that I don't mind helping out.
No, I think it just adds to the transparency to it, and just to understand what the issues are in town. I mean, I have no clue what's going on with public health in town, so I think that would just be good for everybody to understand.
But again, if anyone is interested, I know Jerry would be more than happy to meet with anyone, and you'd be more than welcome to come down, see how the department works, you know, meet with her, you know, or Nicole. I know the door's always open. She has told me many, many times to put that out there to anybody who wants to come down and learn more about what goes on in the Board of Health.
Yeah, I mean, I just had an interaction with Nicole on a project, and first time I ever met her, seems like a very capable professional.
She's phenomenal.
And a nice person to meet, you know.
She's a really good, hard worker, and she's phenomenal.
Yep, she seems like she's a great job.
She's an asset to have in our department.
Yeah.
She really is. And she's eager to learn more and more and more, so.
Well, what do I do, Maureen? Anybody want to take on a motion or?
Someone's going to nominate someone.
Yep. Anybody have any other questions for Charlie?
I don't have a question. Since I'm always the loud one. Let's go for, I think we have two great candidates.
We do, we do.
I know Becky from the pharmacy. Got a couple sore arms from her over the course of time. I know Charlie from all his things he does in town.
I think they both would be great.
I think for what we need right now, Charlie's got more pertinent experience. And if a position opens up, if Sharon leaves, I think Becky would be a great one to come in. But I'm going to make a motion that Charlie gets appointed to the Board of Health.
Does someone like to second that? I'll second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
It's got to be recorded as a voice vote, just like executive session.
Mark and I.
Tishman, hi.
Roland, I.
Paul, sorry.
Rogue, nine.
Shelley, no.
Okay.
Okay, then I guess.
Thank you both.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you both. Thank you very much for coming on.
Charlie, can we actually have you appointed tonight?
They have the Senate authorization to the Town Board, Town Board leads to the sorbanian.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's why we asked Lucy to come so we can have someone to swear in.
Yep.
Her minutes.
She's here.
She visualized it. We can send the official paperwork to her tomorrow.
There you go. The next one, please.
Relax, you see this corporate or not? And Becky, I just want to think, I hope it doesn't dissuade you from trying again. I know the first time I ran, I didn't get in. And it was, tell them to dissuade you.
I'll be back up to sign that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. This was a tough one.
Yeah, I know. It was. I think it's great that there's more than one person that's interested. Usually, you can't get somebody.
If it works out, it would be great.
Yeah.
If we had both, if we had the resignation, we probably could have-
Yeah, I just think knowing what we talked about and issues that we want to address, that was the best way to go.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's a notation here, Ed, that says, "Please have the Clean Water close up with Septic Betterment signatures." Do you want to do that now or later, just at the end?
I wouldn't do it at the end. Maybe when you do the, she doesn't have to hang around for the walk. When Lucy comes back up, if she could do it then.
Okay.
So, she could-
We'll start with Select Board.
Does she know to come back up?
She said she was going to be back up. Let me make sure.
In the meantime, we can start Select Board reports. Who would like to start?
Mine's Uzi. The Planning Board canceled their last meeting because they didn't have a quorum. They're meeting tonight at 7:00. Finance Committee, I was on vacation, and the Public Safety Committee canceled because they had no, nothing on the agenda. So, hopefully, I'd like to get, at least get away and go down to the Planning Board meeting. There's a couple items on there that are going to be interesting.
Okay.
I'll go next. Nothing for Capcom. PQB, the topic of discussion that's come up, which we've all seen, is rating a possible emergency director position, either stipend, you know, rating that position, figuring out where that kind of fits in to the town and the budget, and maybe creating a stipend position. So, we're basically discussing job description, and then ultimately, something that might get rated in town for a, for a position to be posted. For School Committee, we had a meeting this past week, and so I will be a little bit more detailed about this, but it was a great meeting. John Lumbray is an incredible addition to this committee. He has an incredible amount of knowledge. He was asking extremely good questions, both of the superintendent and of the principal. He seems to be very engaged and dialed in. I was, I was very impressed. I think, you know, I don't want to speak for her, but I think Aaron Guterres was very impressed, too. Nice guy, gentleman, and certainly, pretty polished. Some good news, we had a visitor at the meeting. Her name was Abby Tibido. She's a young student in town, and she put forth this article, which is going to be on our warrant for shelters in the playground for preschool students, essentially, sun shelters. There'll be two of them located at either side of the playground. CPC funding is going to be supplying the funding for that, pending town approval. Now, she did a tremendous amount of work for it and seems to take a great deal of pride in it. Her mom was there, and it was very well received, yeah.
Awesome.
She did all the, you know, engineering for it. A shout-out to the Highway Department, who's going to be doing some of the, some of the base work to be able to install these things in. And it was, it was great to see. The principal also gave a report, which I just wanted to summarize a few things. So, related to capital repairs, the cyber arc repairs have been completed, even the additional ones. The fire alarm system has been installed and was tested properly, and all systems are working properly. Sinks in that wing that didn't have any, you know, hot water were installed, tested, and we're just waiting the results of, you know, the water tests associated with the sinks. The doors will take about seven weeks to arrive, but seem to be progressing. Carpet, similar timeframe, and, you know, the roof repairs, similar timeframe as well. So, there's still some outstanding things related to, related to that. I spoke of this last time, but the ice cream social event was extremely well-attended. We had the Fire Department there, police there. It was the first time I had personally been there. It was great to see the turnout and the attendance of it. It was a great evening. The kids had a really good time. The ice cream was good. Never had a bad.
Do you have two Sundays, Matt?
I tried. I actually did because I have both of my kids there, and they don't, I don't know why, but they don't finish their Sunday, so I finished it for them. The grade, all grades are getting ready for field trips to various neighborhood farms, including Fletcher's Farm and the Kacinski Farm, to name a couple. Trunk or Treat is coming up on October 25th, from 5:00 to 6:30, which is always a well-attended event. And then, there is a charity event, but it also is to benefit members, I believe in the fifth grade, though it could be sixth grade. That's unique. It's on October 5th. Ford is going to be there for, you know, a car company.
Vehicles, yeah.
And they're going to have a ton of vehicles there to test drive for free, you know, around town. And every time a person test drives a vehicle, I think it's $100 that that grade gets. And so, the school is trying to get as many people there to test drive these vehicles.
It's actually-
$20.
$20, okay.
It's $20, and last year, they made over $6,000.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's for the sixth grade.
It's for the sixth grade.
Sixth grade, sixth grade, right? Yeah. Thank you. I have some notes here, but I missed, I knew it was a higher grade, but it was-
And today was the walk to school?
Yep, and today was walk to school. You know, we're, the annual walk from right, right here down to, down to the school in the morning. That was very well-attended. I saw pictures of it. I was unable to make it, unfortunately, but wanted to.
Yeah, it was a wild house here in the parking lot this morning between the fester of taking the tree down next door.
Trees, yeah. The church, right.
A couple more updates to keep things going. The Southampton Teachers Contract is, is almost finalized, just some dotting of i's and crossing t's. Nothing major to really report there. The school does support the town, and we got a letter on this, the school does support the town's exploration of an emergency generator for, for town use, provide the expenses related to such are borne by the town. And we're engaged with the school as to placement and use and aesthetics and things like that. So, that's something that maybe a capital committee can, can take up and look at, and grants, et cetera. The principal, or the superintendent did, provided an update, which we all got, that the charter school over in Westfield did not get approved, which is an important update that Lindsay Sabadosa also provided with that, that update as well. But it seemed that the superintendent was, was happy to see that. And then, he also gave an update with regard to, I believe it's called the Student Opportunity Act, and we also got an email about that from Lindsay this afternoon. And essentially, his summary of the, of the points of the article with regard to how it affects Hampshire and North, really that it's really not going to bring very much to us at all. Like, it's not, it's, it's not a positive, it's not a negative. The net effect is, is, is neutral for us, basically, and that, you know, we're still going to be, you know, the windfall on this is just not, is not really going to hit our town because of the characteristics of our town and the way that the, the way that the system is set up. And he summarized that in pretty big detail, but I don't know that I need to, to go into any more detail than that.
Yeah, with our demographics, we'd be off with an increase to the school fund.
Yep.
Just check this out.
Yep. And, got it, Jeff?
No.
Thank you. Lot going on at school.
Lot going on at school.
All right. Just a couple from me on Concom. We met recently, and probably the main thing that was discussed before I had to leave to another meeting was the potential donation of land by the Hendrick family to be at the corner of Rattle Hill and Colespringe. And so, they had Mark Omsley there from Kestrel Trust to support their, their offer to Concom, to the town. And to my knowledge, Concom voted to support their application to the state to do all the necessary paperwork and start the appraisal and so forth. It's a small parcel. It's only about eight and a half acres, but it's very strategically located, I guess I would say. It's part of the Wildlife Corridor, and it also has got, now, open parcels, but assuming, based on some of the work that the Open Space Review Committee had done with their outreach meetings, that we can convince other landowners to maybe donate some parcels, this could connect to the Clearwater parcel. So, this is right in that neighborhood. So, it's, it's not big in its own right, but it's got potential to maybe spur some other landowners. So, they would like to come before the Select Board at some point and kind of present themselves. So, I'm hoping that after maybe town meeting, we could schedule them, just to hear what, what their thinking is. That would be nice. Tonight, I was at the Community Preservation Committee right before this, and just to say that they're gearing up for the new season of looking for proposals. There's actually a, a call for proposals that you'll see posted around town. It looks like this. And it's basically looking for new projects and ideas to be submitted to the Community Preservation Committee in the areas of open space, historic preservation, community housing, and outdoor recreation. There is a website that you can either dow, I'm sorry, on their website, you can either download the application, or I think there's a fill-in application form as well, but you can download the proposal and fill it in. And then, they are having a meeting on November 13th here downstairs at 6:30 for both information session, as well as anybody that has ideas for proposals, that wants to come and talk about those, ask questions. It's not a deadline. It's really a call for proposals and kind of an informational meeting. So, we wanted to get the word out there that there is money available for these kinds of things and encourage people to be creative and maybe think about putting in a proposal. So, look on the website and find out what the proposal requires for information. So, I think that's it for me. If you want to deal with-
If you could bring up MPI-
MPI?
For this week.
Okay, MPI, let's see. Yes, MPI, a master plan. We continued our meeting, and actually, I think we've advanced quite well. We've gone through now all eight chapters, and amongst us all, we have ranked in priority order what we think the goal, the most important goals are for each chapter. And our next step will be going through and trying to then, under these goals, prioritize what we think a couple of the strategies are that we really would like to suggest be focused on, and that will be something that will be a subject of a meeting that we'll have, a joint meeting sometime, maybe in November, with Select Board to present that. What we're finding is that some of the goals themselves may be well-written, but a lot of the strategies underneath them are kind of not as well-written, shall we say, and they main, it's not clear that some of those strategies would actually lead to achieving the goal. So, we're having a little bit of struggle there, but we did really come down with some, some good ideas in terms of our common thinking about what the priorities of the goals can be. And so, we look forward to getting that ready and to present that to the Select Board probably in November.
Thank you. Yeah, I wasn't well Monday night, so I missed that meeting. And as far as the other committees that I'm liaison to, they haven't met. They're all meeting in the, in the coming week. Tomorrow, we have bylaws. Monday, I have the conflict. I have Hampshire Regional and, and the zoning. So, I'll report on those committees next, next meeting.
I just have a couple of things. Board of Health, haven't, there hasn't been a meeting. I think they're obviously meeting tonight. But here's the issue about the Board of Health member, the article for the warrant we'll be addressing, and then also the recycling article, which we'll also be addressing. Council on Aging has been very, very busy. There was a wonderful Go For Life Walk on the 21st of September. It was a great day. There was 40 people that walked. Thank you to the Police Department for their assistance in safely getting people around. And they talked today at the Board of Health, at the Towns of Aging meeting about having, maybe combining it with a couple of other, like the walk today with the kids. So, having it be more younger folks is in addition. The State Formula Grant is on our agenda for tonight. There's a Friends Lunch next Friday, October 11th, and I and one of my coworkers will be speaking about hospice palliative care, the Joint Replacement Program, and the VNA at Holyoke and Holyoke Medical Center. Following is the Care for the Caregiver Program Mercy Life is doing on the 24th of October from 3:00 to 5:00. There's a Help Fair at the Senior Center on October 30th. Pickleball is going very strong. There's a clinic happening on Sunday at 3:00, if anyone's interested. Courts are at the Kona Park. There was a resignation. Liz Plof resigned as vice chair. Lori Loizell stepped up and was appointed vice chair this morning, but they are looking for another member for their board. So, there's a lot going on with programming, and there's a new newsletter out just now for October, so check that out. So looking at mission goals, strategies, and proposing that to us. They also have had presentations by a number of different people who are involved in funds for conservation and have decided to move forward with the 501(c)(3) Friends of Conservation. And they are collaborating, we are collaborating with MPI, Concom, Open Space, and Recreation Plan, and looking at priority lands, having some kind of a strategy for what are the most desirable lands for the town to potentially own as opposed to kind of being reactive. So that's about it. Any questions on any reports? I would just like to take one minute, if it's okay. When I came last time to the Select Board meeting, I announced that there was a resignation from the Conservation Commission. I know Ed's going to mention this, the first thing on his agenda is they're looking for people to be on the committee. I was so impressed with the Conservation Commission when I was on the committee because there was a large number of young people on the committee, on their 20s and 30s. That's the good side, but the downside is these are mobile people, you know, and so all of them have moved off the committee for one reason or another. So I just wanted to just quickly, this was in the packet, but it wasn't, this was a hand in front of me and I didn't get a chance to read it at the Select Board meeting. So I just wanted to read this because it's a beautiful letter from Charlotte Exel, who resigned from the committee because she moved to the Pacific Northwest. She just graduated with her masters from UMass in wetlands, whatever. So this letter is to inform that I've resigned my position as Member and Vice Chair of the South Hampton Conservation Commission. Over the past year and change, I have had the privilege as a member of this board to make a difference for a cause in which I strongly believe. Despite the challenges associated with being a part of a volunteer board, the Conservation Commission has achieved a great deal. We are charged with the protection of the town's wetland resources, areas that provide vital functions and value to the citizens of Southampton. In addition to the protection of these resources, we have maintained numerous properties, partaken in community outreach efforts, educated ourselves to become better civil servants, and created in the past a forest management article that will improve our ability to protect the resources of the town that we love. All of this has been done by a group of volunteers on a shoestring budget. The people of this commission have continually reminded me of the good that can be done by a determined, enthusiastic, and informed group, and I can leave Southampton knowing that it's in good hands because of them. Although the backgrounds of our members are diverse, we all have found our role. The efforts of Brittany Taylor and Joy Piper in making, marking trails and boundaries will continue to allow citizens to use the properties in the town they have worked so hard to acquire. Joy's legal expertise has been instrumental in understanding the often complex filings intrinsic to this board. Tony Zahires--Zahires?
Zahires.
His knowledge and willingness to share has been indispensable. It is hard to fully describe what we owe to his efforts. Art Lawrence, our Treasurer and resident engineering expert, offers technical insight and a critical perspective and gets us home on time. Finally, Marla Hank, our fearless leader. Even towns with full-time conservation agents could not achieve what Marla does in a week. I feel extremely privileged to have been a part of this group of people. I write all this to make it known, the enormous efforts put forth by this board of people. Concom meeting attendance is generally low, meaning guest. So as a result, the labors of the commissioners may go unnoticed. However, I have seldom met and more committed a group of volunteers, and their work deserves to be recognized. I know that in my absence, they will continue to press on in their efforts to protect and maintain the open space and natural resources of this town, and I hope the Select Board will support them in these endeavors, both politically and financially. It's been my honor to serve as the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I thank the Select Board for the opportunity to have made a positive impact on this beautiful town. Respectfully, Charlotte Exel. So I just wanted to bring it back. Very nice. Very, very nice. And I attest to how, what an incredible job they've done. So any other questions or comments about the Select Board reports? So Ed, you want to do your report then?
Could you please skip forward to the signing of the closeout for--
You want to--
The Clean Water Act, specifically the Septic Betterment Program?
Okay. Do you have the paperwork on?
Yes. He wanted to go to another meeting, so.
Oh, it's fine.
She's used to it, right Lucy?
Yeah, it's ours.
So Jen Day had just gotten these on Monday, and Bon Council wants them back no later than October 7th, so this is part of the Clean Water law we got. We had a Septic Betterment Program through this, which is how, we haven't touched this specific fund in a good number of years, so they were asked us to close it out. We still have another fund that we can use for Septic Betterment, and Jerry had said there's like $200,000 in there, so it's not like we're just totally giving this up, so.
This is different from the one you signed last meeting. That was the--
Right, that was actually the--
That was the marketing?
Yeah, the borrowing, no.
Right, and this is Board of Health, though?
No, this is part of that whole program. What they've asked us to do is just close out that portion of the program. So there is one, let's see, there's three certificates, and then there's one overall piece to sign. No, there's four certificates, so there's actually five documents to sign. There's the, the Select Board would sign one of these lines?
And it wasn't used?
We have not used this particular fund in, I don't know how long, so.
Is it because people don't know about it?
No, I think it's because they've been tapping into the other fund.
Okay.
With having two of them.
This is so that people who upgrade their Septic System get--
Right, they're able to take the loans and--
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
But like I say, we have another fund available to us.
But that's on income guidelines, right?
Yes.
I got it.
Hold mine.
I think this is one. It's tapped, but I think it was just--
I think it was just the green one. It was quiet, so see.
Okay.
I'd like a copy of one of each for my records.
Check for--
Right.
You know that green?
Yeah. It's a security paper.
Yeah, there you go. That's the little--
I should have.
Yeah.
There we go.
Won't be the first, and go to the last. Thank you. Who will use that one if you like? Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you all. I appreciate it, and Jen appreciates it. She couldn't be here this evening because she's doing her part-time gig in Goshen tonight. She was actually expecting the meeting to be last night, so.
Thank you.
That being said, I'll go into my report. And Maureen was right, the first thing on my report is, once again, leading that the Conservation Commission is looking for volunteers to fill two vacancies on their Conservation Commission. They are down two at this point, when, if they have one person now that doesn't show up, they have a problem meeting a quorum, so if there's anybody out there interested in conservation or the science aspect of it, please come forward.
It's one of those committees where they need somebody with good experience or background.
Oh, it's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
And dress.
Okay. We do have the hard copies of the annual Town Report for 2018 available in Town Clerk's Office, and it is also posted online. It was discovered, thank you Chris, that the Town Clerk's minutes for the May 2018 Annual Town Meeting were inadvertently not included in that annual Town Report, so they have been added as a separate addendum to it. Chief Ellingsworth and I are waiting to receive a state contract quote from Goose Town Communications for the replacement of the Dispatch Radio Emergency Communication Council. We hope to have it available for the next Select Board meeting, so it may be awarded. Glendale Road Improv Project is coming along. The base coat of asphalt is down, and they are working on the drainage, or I should say working on finishing the drainage. The sidewalk still has to be installed, and there are some trees and some other minor adjustments which will also need to be done. We will be meeting with Jamie Reinhardt from Hill Engineers Architects next week concerning the envelope study for the Old Town Hall at 80 East Street, and we'll also be meeting with William Devlin, architect, for the same purpose later this month. And members of the Historical Commission and Chief Ellingsworth will join me with meeting with those architects. Tom Michaelman from Sudbury, who's involved in advocating for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, has reached out to me to coordinate our efforts to lobby for passage of House Bill Number 1719, which would allow CPA funds to be utilized where rail banking agreements are in place. This would greatly help us with our Greenway project. I will also be passing this information along to the Greenway Committee. And Sudbury is in the same position that we are. They would like to acquire the right of way through CPC funding. However, they have a rail banking issue there also. Theirs is with CXS, where ours is with Pioneer Valley Railroad, so we'll be coordinating our efforts. I will be out of the office tomorrow to attend the State's Department of Revenue Seminar, What's New in Municipal Law? And let's see, I already did the old business under the new business. They can disregard that. Upcoming Select Board meetings, October 22nd before the Special Town Meeting. The Special Town Meeting is October 22nd at the Norris Elementary School at 7:00 PM. November Select Board meetings are to be determined.
Do you anticipate us meeting a meeting between now and the 22nd?
As of today, I will say, I've got nothing that I know of that would require that. Whether something comes up the next few days or not, I don't know. I will cross my fingers that nothing comes up as an emergency and we can make the three weeks.
Okay. Hopefully, nothing urgent will be added to the short little hour we have before the Town Meeting. Because last one--
Well--
--we had a large number of--
Well, I'll turn that around and say, yeah, if anything large comes up, like a bunch of PCFs, it's going to have to wait for the following.
Yeah, exactly. Lucy, do you want to say something?
I just want to ask, is the war going to be signed tonight?
Yes.
And I'm going to stay until it's--
I was going to throw it under your door.
I--
Okay.
So you want to carve my dates for November?
I think that would be helpful. So if you mean the 22nd, two weeks later would be the 5th. As Election Day, if that matters.
I'm going to be going the 19th rather than that.
Would you say, Robert?
There can't be an election there.
There is no election.
There is no election.
There is no election.
We don't have an election here, do we?
Not here.
I think that's just national.
We actually, we actually did have a Select Board meeting the night of our election.
So they planned a board that gave me, I don't election day.
So it'll be November 5th?
Be November 5th and then the 19th.
Well, let me just bring this up before you decide.
Okay.
Would you like to try to get back onto the same schedule as, yeah, I probably would. Same schedule as the Town Hall's open, so.
Is that the 12th and 26th?
It would either be meeting on the 29th of October or the 12th of November, if you wanted to try to do that. What would that help?
Try to do what?
Get back on the normal schedule. Why would that help?
I don't know--
Well, that's when the offices are open in Town Hall, so if you operate on somewhat the theory that, yeah, people may come to the Town offices to do business and then save a Select Board meeting or vice versa, that's all, that's why--
Well, plus it allows us to talk to the clerk and the treasurer and all.
It's probably a good idea.
I mean, that's what I have programmed in here, so that would bring it back on schedule.
So we're looking at October 29th?
29th and the 12th.
And November 12th?
Or could we just go all the way to 12th?
Yeah, I mean, the 22nd, we'll have a meeting. We can determine that if we need the 29th, right?
Some other way, we should schedule the 12th.
Schedule the 12th and leave the 29th open. So that would--
Can't make the 29th in.
12th and the 26th.
12th and 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. So unless we need to do otherwise, it's just 10/22, 11/12, and 11/26.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have anything on--
Right.
They just have it on the 27th, is that right? Of October?
So far.
Yeah, so far.
So I can get rid of that one.
Okay, so old business, the annual report you already mentioned in your administrative report. I want to acknowledge that the Town, the annual report was dedicated to Art Lawrence. I'm hoping when we go back downstairs to one of the upcoming meetings that we'll be able to invite him in and actually formally thank him for all he does. He's a pretty much full-time volunteer in this building, and he's done an incredible job, and so please check out the beginning of the annual report where it's dedicated to him.
How did he react when he found out?
Francine and Ed told him.
He admitted to the fact that he was totally surprised that Kat didn't get out of the bag, that he had loaded it on the website and didn't pay any attention to it, but I had made a specific point to actually take him a copy, a hard copy of it, so he either didn't have to go to the Town Clerk's Office or did not get one. And he said, he started looking through that and came to it and, yeah, was totally surprised. Very, very appreciative.
His family did a good job of keeping it quiet.
Yeah, and I didn't, I, originally, I was going to take a formal photograph of him to go along with it, and I knew, I wasn't going to do that to the end, but I knew once I do that, did that, he would know about it, but when the family provided that photograph, I didn't have to.
It was one of him smiling.
And the only, I, we asked for the, the only thing that I did with that photo to crop it is that original picture. He was, besides the t-shirt, he was in shorts, and I, I kind of cropped it so that you couldn't tell if it was shorts or long pants.
Should have fully chopped long pants off.
Well, that was, that was very nice.
Yes, it is.
Well deserved.
Yes, it is. The other two updates you already gave under old business. So then we can move to new business. Trinity Washburn, 55 White Lobe Road, requests for her son Blake to attend Smith Vocational High School.
Trinity there.
Can I have your order, come on?
Come on up.
Yeah.
Come on up, Blake.
I mean, I'm coming.
Expose him to her.
Absolutely. Let's do this together.
How you guys doing?
Great, how are you?
Good. How you doing, Blake?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
So at the time that Blake had considered going to Smith, they were full. And so since the school year started, they had opened up, somebody had left the school. So they called us and said, you know, you're now available to attend school, but because they were full at the time, we had never applied for funding or done any of the things that we would have done had even accepted. So they said this was the avenue we needed to take. In this avenue, I talked to Jennifer Day and a couple people in the office and had learned that there were three people that were at Hampshire, or that were at Smith that returned to Hampshire, but I don't know how the budget goes as far as if you can trade a kid in or if once you pay, you pay. I mean, I don't really understand how that works. I do know that there were three kids within the last few weeks that had thought they wanted to go to Smith that had returned to Hampshire. So I'm not sure if that plays a role, but Blake would really like to go there and be requesting that he be allowed depending on--
We just bill Blake directly.
Yeah, he's a hard worker, so they work.
So we did get some documents from, the accountant, and things come up along the way that are unanticipated, and there happens, you know, I didn't get a specific email that said three students that initially went to Smith or plan to are no longer going. We got a list of the, not the full name of the students, just their first names, and then we also got a communication, unfortunately, that two of the students that are currently going to Westfield, that the tuition jumped up really significantly for this complete, this budget cycle, so that's somewhat unfortunate. I did not get any communication that says that any students had--
Actually, if you look at that list--
Yeah, in the bottom, it was--
I mean, that's--
On the bottom.
Yeah.
I mean, this is true, but the data that we also got from Vicki is that we're oversubscribed and we're already over budget.
Yeah, even the ones that have dropped out because we were very aggressive during the budget season, trying to free up some extra money to go to Norris. We were aggressive on guessing how many students--
Yeah.
--would not attend, and actually, the percentage that, shall I say, the percentage that didn't decide to go this year was less than a normal year, so we had more go. And it looks like--
It's in there.
Yeah, there it is.
I was going to say a couple I know personally, so I'm sure this is the case.
Yeah, I don't know how--
Yeah, so--
How's the list here?
Yeah, it actually should go like this, so. If you look way out into the--
That's the highlighted one.
Yeah, the column just before the Smith cross--
Yeah.
And you look down, you'll see the third one down is not attending. There's another one, maybe 10 or 12 down, it's not attending. You'll see one about four below that, it says WD, which is Withdraw. There's two, one, two lines before, below that, not attending. Another one about three lines before that, not attending. Another withdrew, and then another one, not attending. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven that did not attend out of the new students, but that was not as many in the past that did not choose not to go, so.
So we don't know if this includes the three students that--
This does include--
I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, because actually, once Trinity gave me a phone call, Vicki called up the school and asked if they could have, we could have an up-to-date, up-to-date list.
So what you're saying is that even though it looks like there's a large number of people that are not attending or withdrew, it's actually less than usual, and so we're spending more money for the people that are currently going there, and on top of that, we also just found out that--
Westfield's increased.
Westfield's increased by a pretty significant amount, and our current budget is--
Just shy of--
Just shy of--
Eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, we're already committed to nine hundred thousand, so we're already, we're already...
I mean, I'm not sure how the special ed budget works, but Blake has an IP and is part of that, so I'm not sure, you know, how that all comes out in the wash, but...
Basically, as, as part of a...
But it's a great fit for him.
Yeah, as part of the budget, there's two pieces. One is the tuition, which is almost eighteen thousand dollars a year. It's seventeen, I think, eight. So that's one piece that goes into the budget. The other piece is, we also budget twenty-five hundred for each student for special education costs. So it's about twenty thousand, about twenty thousand a student. Now, what, at the end of the year, what we, the parameters, at least on the special education costs, is Smith will only bill us the actual cost. So it could be a little bit less than the twenty-five hundred or nothing, or it could be above that. And then we kinda do the balance. I don't know.
I mean, as far as like Smith goes, they said next year he would be able to get in. As far as if you request in enough time, Hampshire Regional Hospital allow you to. But the issue would be he wouldn't have the shop that he wants. So all the shops get, you know, you go around and check them out, and then by the end of ninth grade, your shop is picked. So the big issue in not waiting a year is more so that all the shops would be taken. He could still go, but he wouldn't have probably the shop. Probably his top three are very competitive there. So he would really have to get over there and fight for plumbing or electrician or, you know, and these are things that he would like to do in life. He isn't aspiring to go to college. He would like to work in the trades, you know?
You know, last meeting, when this came up, Tammy, who usually is here, her kids go to Smith Oak. And she was, you know, she basically felt that anybody would be pretty disadvantaged by entering now because all the rotations or whatever have already been done.
So when we talked to the, the school department and they had offered this to us, they had said that, you know, really 10th grade is when they start in their shops. And maybe he might've missed a rotation. But, you know, as far as in terms of it being the rotations he's looking for, we could probably finagle that to be, you know, maybe he doesn't have to do the hair one or maybe he doesn't have to do, you know, a couple of these that he's not interested in at all because it's like a full rotation in the same one. So they didn't feel that to be a problem. And certainly, entering in 10th grade, which he would be able to do, he would not have the ability that, or the chances that he has now.
Is it safe to assume that if he missed the carpentry rotation this time going in, he could still select that when he wants for the 10th grade? You don't have to be in a rotation in order to apply for that program?
So the way I understand it, and I could be wrong, but the way I understand it is how you do in your rotations is how you get picked. So like plumbing is one of their most important ones, and only 10 kids get picked. And it is absolutely based on your test scores and how well you do in that class if you get picked for it. And so you usually get like a top three. And so you number what your top three are, and then you take those, you know, turns in your ninth grade. And then, depending on how well you do, will depend on, you know, if you get picked for...
So they select you.
They select you. And it's definitely based on your scores and how well you do. And the more aggressive, which seems to be plumbing and electrician, have less students and, you know, are more competitive.
So what happens if your top three, you don't get into any of them?
That can happen. And that's also why the rotation is how it is at Smith right now. And you may have more students drop during this, you know, season, depending on if they know that they're not gonna get into their shop. I feel like this is a very vulnerable year for ninth graders. You know, even females who are, you know, planning on getting into nursing or hair or whatever, if they didn't get into their one, you might see them go back to, you know, Hampshire Regional and try something else or, you know, another trade school. But it seems to be pretty competitive and based off of ninth grade.
So what are your interests?
Top three, probably plumbing, electrical, and then forestry.
So top two are the top two in the school? Good trade, so.
Trades that...
Important ones.
We, yeah, we need people to get it in terms of...
And he drew up his dad doing construction, and yeah. So, right, and our cousin does plumbing in trade with Smith for...
The apprentices?
Yeah, so for the apprentices, but at MG Moran. So he was an intern there, and now he runs MG Moran. So we, I mean, who knows how that plays a role? I mean, let's be honest. But at least, I feel strongly that he understands the trades better and would be a better fit for him. And as far as like going next year, he could still go, but his options are limited.
Gotcha.
Are there any busing additional costs or no?
Shouldn't be.
Just be at Norris, pick up certain times?
Right.
It's an established route, established bus.
He has a few friends who are doing that right now, yeah.
So obviously, the question ought to be, we're, I mean, right now, even with the Westfield additional tuition...
Even without that?
Without that, we're over.
Even without that.
So she's counted in the seven that have come, that are coming back? So she's counted the seven times 20 already?
Yeah, her email was...
This was just the original list. This was just the original list.
Seven that didn't go?
We needed more people to have fallen off to hit our, to hit the budget number.
So where do these funds come from? Do they fall back on Norris to come up out of their budget? Or is it...
We've given that number to Norris. That's why what we try to do when we're budgeting is probably now extra in the vocational tuition account. And then at the end of the year, if there's extra there, we can give that back to Norris. But we've already given Norris their funds, so if we're off on the special tuition end or the vocational tuition end, that's gonna have to come from us.
But at the end of the year, if they have a surplus, we can, well, they'll give it back to us. The school will give it back to us if there's a surplus.
Yeah, but the account's already overdrawn by twenty grand and plus, plus the Westfield stuff, so you gotta find, like, what's that?
Five grand a student for Westfield, forty-eight hundred?
I mean, at that point in time, whatever, and, I mean, at one point, when it first started, Denise Cashin was gonna let Vicki know that she thought we were about sixty thousand dollars over. So, but whatever that number is, we're gonna have to find, find a way at the end of the year to transfer and cover it.
This is a fifteen thousand dollar decision here?
No, it's about twenty.
Could you add the twenty?
Because you've got, number one, the tuition, like I say. We budget twenty-five hundred for each one for Smed. And seventeen, nine sixty-five is the actual tuition. So about twenty thousand. And that would put us to about sixty overdrawn because we're already about forty overdrawn.
So my thought, unless somebody else wants to go first, but...
No, I just wanted to comment that it's always just a shot in the dark. You know, we, we were trying very hard to free up money for the special program over at Norris. And so, we were trying to match exactly where maybe in the past, it'd be a little bit more cushioned for the Oak. And I think that...
I will say, if it's okay, that when we were applying to Smith, we were within our timeframe. And they had said that they had an extra amount of kids that had applied. So when we had applied, we were within the timeframe to ask for the budget, and they had already been at their quota. So this just happened to be a year that there were, you know, a bunch of kids that wanted to, to go there. But it seems like they were planning on being a lot over budget in the first place. I guess, for me, just as a parent, I feel like next year he would definitely be able to go, but just be limited on what he'd be able to do.
So what are our options? I mean, have we, can we thought about what, what? Are there any alternatives?
I mean, your two alternatives are, you deny the request.
I know, but...
And the second is...
The other, the other answer, what, where would we be looking?
We'd have to find the money somewhere at the end of the year or end up in a deficit, which we can't do with the U.R.
Or we could look at...
Operational stable.
Free cash?
Yeah.
That's a town meeting.
That would be a town meeting decision, but...
But let's bring it to probably a more basic tone. I mean, we're talking twenty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money we gotta figure out. But, you know, Blake here, getting a good start on his future, to me, that's a valuable step in a child's life in, you know, getting ahead on that. So I would rather figure out a way to get twenty thousand dollars down the road rather than say to Blake, well, next year, take a shot at it. Because, you know, a good start to, a good foundation to an education is what it's all about, so...
I agree. I agree with John.
Can I ask a question? Once he, if he's accepted and he gets in, they don't have to reapply next year, right? As a...
I wouldn't think so. It's automatic.
You don't have to reapply every year.
So you do, um, sorry, I forgot. So when I talked to them, they had said that they anticipate, they had, you know, it's the same as you guys do where you anticipate certain amount of people that drop out every year. And they were saying they have like seven to 10 students per ninth grade specifically that don't get into where they wanted to get into. So they anticipated, well, there's an opening now. So he can get in now if this got approved. But if not, or if it took a little bit of time or if someone got in sooner or whatever, he would be like the first runner-up in a sense. And then when someone drops because they didn't get whatever they were trying to get, then he would be allowed. So it could be during this current school year. But this is like the foundation of where you get approved to even...
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I think the question is more maybe wrong is that if he gets in now, he's in for four.
That's right.
Yeah, yes, sorry.
And I will say, the only caveat to that is if they don't meet the academic standards, they won't...
Yes.
If they don't get the shop that they want, so reserve it back out if it's a difference. But that would be his choice or their choice.
But ultimately, they had said like if someone maybe got the budget set up before Blake did, because I'm sure we weren't the only family that they had called, that he would be, you know, first runner-up and getting, you know, in next. So it could still be a potential if it wasn't exactly right now.
I guess question to you, Blake. Are you gonna study hard enough for this and get good grades?
That's what I mean, pal. I was like, let's, let's... But it's a round table and after conversation.
I think the bigger issue for me is that, you know, Westfield can just send, say, we're raising up tuition by an additional, like, whatever, after the budget's already been done. That's my bigger issue. And I'd love for them, I mean, right now, we're paying for a couple students because they don't have an airplane, technology, or mechanic program. So we're paying a lot for transportation and for them to go to the not the preferred of Oak schools. So anyway, I think that makes it even more difficult. They could just say, oh, by the way, our tuition just went up, you know?
Yeah, I'm not really sure how that works. I don't know if South Hampton did that, if that would work. Just raise your faces.
Yeah, midstream, yeah, that's the thing.
I'm not sure. That's the thing, but yeah.
So what would you like to do?
I'll make a motion. We approve him going, and we'll find the funding as we go through the fiscal year.
And I'll second that.
Any more further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You're anywhere, young man.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good for coming.
So can we call you when something breaks?
Absolutely.
I really think there's a conflict of interest, but...
But in about 10 years, he can join the Khan-Khan as well. He goes into forestry.
These are the things he needs to remember, though, for sure, because it comes from a community.
Yeah, it sure does.
Absolutely.
We're all in this together.
I appreciate your mom coming, standing up.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're the first group of people here.
Actually, with his size and his arm size, I've got a project I could use him at at home. We've got one of those pull-out closets that's now fourteen years older or whatever. Hose is going on it.
We have you for you yet.
And I looked, and I forgot when we had the kitchen designed. There's a nice deep sink, and it's right back against the counter. So there's probably about a space, about... You can just go up and get it, and I'm going, looking at it last night going, oh, God.
Well, approve him and get his hand right down the sink.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you both.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, next is the Select Board to approve and sign the COA.
Does she need to do it? Mrs. Washburn? Do you need to do something? I was just wondering.
Yes.
I will, I will actually email Vicki, Eric Alton, and Denise Cashin to Hampshire Regional because we use their central office tonight that the board voted.
But do they have to contact Smith, you know?
So they said it came from the superintendent, which is it, I'm sure that's what they're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So they said the approval would come from them. So I don't know if it...
So if you don't get a call?
I mean, I would probably...
Follow up?
Follow up tomorrow afternoon.
And make sure that...
On Friday with Smith and say, have you, you know, have you heard?
Okay.
Have you been, you know, okay locally?
Perfect. I'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's a wonderful day. We want everybody to succeed. Next is Select Board to approve and sign COA. Formula Grant, Janet Kane, Chair of the COA is here to answer any questions we have. This is, what do you want to say about that?
And before she starts, I'll just let you know that there's an amended copy on, in the Dropbox and should also be in your packets because I had one of my late-night brain bubbles last night when Janet was sitting next to me at one of the meetings. And I had asked her, because I kinda had a little question on one of the PCFs...
PRs.
Or PRs in this case, for the backup van driver. Because I asked her, I goes, why does it only say 17 hours? Because the backup van driver is gonna fill in for Richard Coleman when he's on vacation. Well, Richard works 25 hours, so why does it say that?[1574.21] Well, Richard works 25 hours, so why does it say that? And Janet said, well, we know we don't have enough money if we've, you know, got to pay them, you know, pay Richard, being out of the Fritta Fund, and then pay for the backup driver, or whatever. And I looked over and said, well, why don't you put, or ask to pay for the backup van driver out of the Formula Grant, rather than the Fritta Grant? And so, she said, I don't know if we can or not. Do you have a conversation with, with Vicky if we can do that? So, I went and talked to Vicky, and she said, yeah, as long as the Formula Grant will allow that type of expense. She said, that's fine. The only thing we can't do at the end, end of a fiscal year is we cannot take, if one grant went into deficit, we can't reimburse it from another. But if you directly ask to charge it. So, there's a little bit of a change in, in the request there, but-
So, is the paper the amended one?
Should be, yes.
The one that would have $1,000 under van driver, Dr. Justus.
Gotcha. So, just, I'm filling in for Joan, because she's at a conference, so I'm pitch-hitting tonight. We did try to build in some extra hours for Joan. We asked for it in the budget season last year, because she does run some after-evening activities. And oftentimes, that goes without her being officially paid, which is not a good labor practice for us. So, we're building 20 hours into the state Formula Grant for this year, and we'll come to the budget season. We'll try to get that back into the, because she's only 26 hours right now, and she can easily do more than that. But it's not, we don't want to move her up to 32, because it's not a week. So, we just figured if we bulk 20 hours for the year, that will cover some of the evening activities. And we're doing the same thing with, the administrative assistant is paid five, three out of her seven hours comes out of the state Formula Grant. And so, for vacation coverage, when Joan does have vacation, we wanted to build that extra dollars into that to cover flows, both the administrative assistant and the volunteer coordinator, so that they have the money built in through the state Formula Grant to cover that overtime, that, those extra hours. Because we don't, we know we don't have it in the budget. The on-call backup driver, that's just, if Richard's on vacation, or he calls in sick, it's more of like an on-call emergency fund, so that we can not stop transportation because somebody's on vacation. And you have to be pretty trained and certified, so I just can't go on and drive the van myself, so we'll need to, to use, hopefully, I'm not sure we'll need that much, but we'll need based it on maybe the two weeks vacation, plus some sick days, and some personal time. So, worst-case scenario, I think, is what. Other programs, we're looking, continue with the pickleball, maybe Tai Chi. We're looking at Zumba Gold. We do other programs that are dinner theaters, that we have to pay people to come in and perform, and they've been very well-attended. So, that will continue. And we'll continue to look at new programs for that. We do have volunteer transportation that we fund every year. Equipment furnishing, in case something breaks in the center, because we don't really have room for much more in the center, but there is replacement needs. Office programs, supplies. Our budget for expenses is very small within the town, so the $600 gives us, if you folks probably all know what an ink cartridge costs, so that goes very quickly. So, this will help supplement the expense budget there. Postage, we're going to do two large mailings to the seniors this year, not just the people that are participating, but trying to do more outreach to those that we are not reaching today. There's the Massachusetts COA dues, the conference that Joan is attending right now, which is critical, to stay up on the latest requirements. And at the end of the year, we always have a volunteer recognition luncheon. So, that pretty much takes care of the $14,496. In pretty standard format that we've been consistently using. The van driver is really the big change, and the extra hours for the director, so that we can pay her for her time.
Any questions?
I think one of the things to mention is there's, you know, increased census and participation in the senior center.
Yeah, we do their annual part that has to go to the state in order to get the state Formula Grant at the end of each year. So, our, both participation and transportation and everything has grown substantially. So, next year, when they redo the, the state Formula Grant is based on the 2010 census, which has, as I said, 1,200 seniors. And so, you get so much per senior. Well, we really have 2,000 seniors. So, I don't know, when the next census comes out, it'll be interesting to see how the state handles the cost and expense of that. So.
Any other comments, questions? If someone would like to make a motion, too.
I'll make a motion. We're accepted as submitted for the grant.
Yeah, I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Yeah, thanks so much for coming in.
Would you please, those two, Rena? And I'll give you one copy of it, so, for your official-
You covering the PR, I might need to go home. I mean, we haven't posted the job, we're just going, we're going to post the job for the on-call. We're not ready to hype somebody, we want to go through the posting process.
I will do my best to cover for you.
Call me tech.
Take one of these, and the other, and give it to Joan, and you get to go back in the package.
Website. Put it in your mailbox, please.
There you go.
She's gone until Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the select board to approve the town, special town meeting warrant and to sign the warrant. So, the special town meeting is October 22nd, 7:00 PM, at North School. And everybody has a copy of the warrant. And how would you like to do this? Do you want to take one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, so, Ed, why don't you explain why this vote has to happen again?
Oh, okay, the number-one article, replacing the East Street Bridge. One of the statutory requirements, when the special town meeting vote has taken place before the annual election, is they're supposed to occur within 90 days of each other. We have reversed our town election and town meeting, so this was just over 90 days, so it did not meet statutory compliance with that. And the, the election ballot vote stands, it's good. So, now, what we have to do is have this one revoted at a special town meeting, both town council and bond council recommended doing it sooner, rather than later, when people could actually remember why they voted for it in the first place. So, that's why it's recurring here again. And the other thing I will say about it, because I've had a few people comment to me between this final version and the draft version, is, jeez, the language has changed a lot. And I had, I had taken a shot at it, doing the language, much like it was back at the February special town meeting. Sent it along to KP Law. They made some revisions to it, sent it back to me. The last piece of the puzzle is I sent it along to bond council, because actually, when we go to borrow, they're the ones that actually have the ability to say, yep, that's good, or, jeez, we can't let you borrow against that, because it's missing this and that. And bond council actually did a good amount of editing to it, and actually took out some of the borrowing language and the debt exclusion language. And I was just curious. I had an idea why, but I had to know for sure. So, I shot an email back off to bond council and asked them, curious why you deleted this particular language on the borrowing by the treasurer and the debt exclusion? I go, and I said, is it by any chance, because in this particular instance, the ballot question has already taken place, which actually does the approval of the debt exclusion and the borrowing, and this is coming second? And he said, absolutely, you've hit the nail on the head. So, that's why this language is different from the February special town meeting or from the ballot question.
Is this a two-thirds majority on this one?
It's still borrowing, so yes, it's a two-thirds majority.
Will they be marked on the final version, just a separate majority or two-thirds?
Yes, you'll have that, you will have the, you'll have the motion, you'll have the summary, and you'll also have recommendation, not under our purview, or not recommendation from the finance, and in this particular one, finance committee did recommend it.
Well, does this dollar amount include, it says, like, the closing of the bridge and doing some kind of analysis of, you know, emergency planning, detail work, all of that? Does this include all this?
Yes. The only thing is, it's a $2.6 million project, so this is, this is our portion of it. We still got the $1 million Mass Works grant, which supplements that to take it to 2.6. But, and actually, one of the pieces that KP Law attorney had me change that's still in here, is in the original language, it read, "said funds to be used for construction fees and permits, engineering easements, or any other eligible costs associated with construction." KP Law had me add to that, "other eligible and incidental costs." So, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll, it covers, intent is to cover all, all those.
Remind me what our hopeful start date was on this? Is it?
I believe it's March of 2020.
Does that $1 million go away next June 30th? Because we had it extended.
Yes.
So, we got to spend it by then.
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent. I have also given them a construction schedule that takes us past that date, but my estimation is we're going to send them the documentation for costs that we'll try-
So, they'll cover that $1 million.
Cover the first $1 million.
With their money, yeah.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with this? Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve Article 1. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second one is to rescind Article 2 of the July 26 special town meeting, and that was the one about 111 Glendale.
Yes, and this is, I've actually had more questions on this one than Article 1, only because it's very simplified language. Back in July of 2018, we did not know if we were going to receive-
Right.
-the grant or not. So, against town council's advice, I put two articles on the special town meeting, one assuming we got the grant, and one in case we did not. Had a long, probably almost an hour discussion with town council on this. Told them we were going to do it, we weren't just going to go with one. So, they were kind enough to remind me that, okay, by putting two articles on there and both passed, we actually did two separate appropriations, which are on our books, and DOR will look at it that way. So, what I, we are currently doing is going back and to say, to clear up our books, we're doing a clerical or administrative recension of Article 2, which is the one that would have been, we're going to acquire it, but we would not have gotten the grant.
So, let me ask a question, and maybe it's moderator. I mean, to me, if I'm just looking at this sitting here, I'm not going to remember what it is. So, do we get to speak on it, or do we have to show it in writing?
Well, don't forget, and the one that actually is distributed at a town meeting, it's going to have the summary and the motion. And I'm, I'm going to put that in there. I'm sure I will probably have to address that for, you know, people that don't remember.
But should actually show what it is in there?
Well, I'm not going to show the whole article, but I will summarize it, because the whole article's like three pages long.
Is that enough?
I know.
I think so.
Okay, I just want to make sure legally that somebody can't come back and say, well, that's not what you put on there, you know? Okay.
Yeah, it just says here, "and even involved would not be contingent upon the town receiving grant funds." So, it would just have to be clear that this is just, you know-
Because we did. It's the good news.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, leave it the good news.
And it's okay to be as limited as this, without, in the article itself?
Yes, it can be as simple as this.
Okay.
And I already have scared a couple of people on the open space committee that thought I was, like, trying to give back the land or something.
Is this a two-thirds majority on this one?
Well, that would be based on what the other one would, was-
I think this was, yeah, I think it was still borrowing, but, yeah. Well, actually, it's a recension, though, so. I will check with the House, this is probably just a majority.
This was, this original article was a two-thirds majority?
Right, but I think there's a recension, it's only a majority. It's a good question, I will make sure that-
Okay, we have a motion by Matt. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The third article is unpaid bills. This is a bill for $270 for prior year unpaid from Goose Town Communications. Said something to be taken from operation, operating stabilization. This was a bill that was unaccounted for-
Well, actually, believe it or not, never mind the two-thirds, which it would be to come from operational stabilization. This is a previous fiscal year at a special town meeting, so it needs a nine tenths.
Jeez.
Good thing it's only $270.
Lucky it's only $270.
Nine tenths.
Well, I kept trying to convince the town accountant that we should get the police chief to say, I'll pay it out of this year's budget, which would have been a majority vote, but he wouldn't go for that, I guess.
That's the clean way to do it.
More like, I-
Yeah, right, you want that in your books.
He told us payroll deduction, Jake.
Okay, so, any-
I move to approve the transfer of $270,000 from-
$270.
$270,000, yes. Seconded by Joan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, smiling back there.
I was-
Good archie.
Okay. The next- I was looking at thousands.
All right, Article 4 is funding for health director position. This is the town will vote to raise appropriate for operating stabilization or otherwise provide the sum of $15,192.82 to fund human services account 015510.113, health director wages for the remainder of the fiscal year 2020, in order to enable the Southampton Department of Public Health to continue to provide health and human services through to the end of the fiscal year, or take any other actions relative to it.
And this is coming from a stabilization account, so it would take a two-thirds majority vote at the special town meeting.
If this is approved, then it'll be in the budget, so next year, we're going to count for it next year.
Correct. And I will let you know that the finance committee did not recommend this particular one, because of the funding mechanism of how to operate.
How does this affect the study you did, the pay equity study you did? I mean, the pay equity study gave an increase to an hourly rate.
Right.
It doesn't dictate anything from that point on. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. I mean, we can always get into the discussion of the fact that, basically, the Board of Selectmen cut the requested Board of Health budget for fiscal year 2020 to go to the town meeting. They did that on the assumption that they felt that the health director position didn't need as many hours as was currently in there.
Or that they could find it within their current budget.
Right.
Either way. I think what we did was just level fund the budget.
Yeah, we just leveled the budget.
But you know, we also, you know, the additional hours for the health director wasn't also funded, so a lot of things weren't funded. It wasn't just this, the, this position is also gone, I believe, from 24 to 32 hours, and it's been a lot of-
But under the Pay Equity Act, we are supposed to make progress in making that whole, so.
And it's up to the department to figure that out.
They can't cover this out of their own budget.
Well, I would say, they can't cover it out of their own budget at the new rate, at the number of hours.
For the current hours.
Right.
Right. But they could choose to reduce hours, right?
Right.
They could also restructure the department as well.
Right, exactly. It would be a staffing restructure, I guess you could-
But even if they restructured, they would not have enough to cover this.
Right, no, by restructuring, it's reducing hours, I guess, would be the only way, yeah.
And how many hours is it now?
Or combining the positions.
Yeah. How many hours is the health director?
I think it's 32.
32?
32.
Right, and I think when the position started, it was 24. When I was in the Board of Health, there was a office person who staffed the office. They were talking about minutes and all that sort of thing, did all of the office things, and then a health agent who handled the, going out and doing all the inspections.
So, it's a clerical function.
It was more of a clerical function. So, it wasn't a health director and health agent.
That's one of my reasons for voting Charlie in at this position, because he has a background, and I'm hoping he could be one of the people that looks at it and analyzes it and decides with the other two board members what's really needed in that office.
And the other thing is, there's huge interest in the state in looking at regionalization of efforts. This is one department where, you know, all these issues cross town lines, and there is a huge emphasis and money available for, this would be a great test department to look into regionalization. They don't, they were talking at the last meeting about, you know, they don't have, not every single community doesn't have a nurse to do case finding when there are infectious diseases. So, anyway, it just seems like it would be an opportunity.
For that opportunity, isn't that a Board of Health's decision on looking at regionalization, or do we have to place a part in that?
It's their decision.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they have certain statutory rights, so basically, staffing other than budgetarily, if they want, say, we need a health director versus a health agent, that's their-
Centralization, if we, if we, I think we want to look at a centralization of the health department, is that up to us as a select board?
It's up to the Board of Health.
So, we could make a recommendation that they look at it, but it's up to them to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'm, I move to remove Article 4 from the town warrant.
Is there a second?
It's not the fiscal responsible thing to do.
I think my concern-
And it was already voted down, too.
My concern is that, and it's my concern for one of the other issues I'm going to be addressing tonight, is that when we had an audit by the Department of Revenue, they specifically said not to add to department budgets and/or positions mid-year. And I think that we're being asked to do that on a couple occasions tonight.
Well, I would just say this on that. Number one, they requested this at the beginning of the year, so I might argue that we really aren't increasing it at mid-year. The other thing I will say, and be very vague about this, but because of some other things that are going on, I think the Board would reduce their risk, and I'm all about mitigating risk, if, to let this ride and stay on here.
And go in front of the town-
And let it go in front of the special town meeting. I mean, my prediction is it's going to fail again.
It did. It did last meeting.
Is this a two-thirds or a majority?
This is because it's coming from stabilization.
Oh, that's right, it's a two-thirds majority.
Yeah.
Then, um.
I'm not rescinding my motion.
You're rescinding.
I'm not rescinding my motion.
You're not?
No. Let it fail.
I'm going to second it for the conversation, okay? Because that's really where we need to be, is a conversation. So we have a choice of rescinding it or going, letting it go forward. If it goes forward, she'll have to get up there as a health director, make her case of why she feels those hours are needed. Correct? Is that correct?
Well, my assumption will be is probably somebody from the Board of Health, but rather than the director, but yeah, some of it happens.
So Shelley or Charlie at this point?
Yeah.
Or Sharon, if she's still involved. Interesting.
And with the composition of a new board, would they still put this forward?
Yeah.
There's that, too.
Yeah, I'm torn.
And we're thinking of having a second special town meeting, aren't we, whether?
Well, we'll have the normal one, probably January timeframe, yeah.
Is there something that could wait until the new board got itself established with full three members?
We have to remove it.
Right, we'd have to vote it down now with the recommendation they put it back.
And do you know what, the funds are starting with, what, February or something?
I mean, free cash?
No, no, no.
She's being paid at the new rate at total amount of hours.
Right.
When does that fund out that this?
My guess is probably, well, and, and probably late January.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's a pretty good suggestion, Chris, I think we have a.
What's the next meeting? The special meeting?
Will be December or January.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it puts the onus back on the Board of Health rather than on the citizens to vote, so I don't know. But as Matt said, if this has already come up once before and gotten shot down.
It's a town meeting.
Do you like them out?
I don't know.
I mean, that may be a compromise there.
What's that to ask the Board of Health to review it with the new board?
Yeah.
Yeah, the majority of the board is going to be new.
Right. And I know that a lot of the information that's been sent to me about regionalization has actually come from Charlie, so he's very informed about what the state would like to do, so.
But we'd have to remove it and then make that recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So is there a second to?
Yeah, I second.
All right. Any other comment? You ready to vote on that? Or you want to discuss it further?
Well, I think the motion was to take it off.
Right.
To have, to redo the motion to say, take it off for now and put it on to the.
Well, bring it back to the, well, meeting. Actually, it would be up to them.
Back to the Board of Health. See if they want to resubmit it for the next special town.
The motion is just to remove it, that we can make a recommendation after that.
Okay. All right.
So you just want to keep the motion as?
As is.
As it is?
Ready to vote?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Do you want to make a?
Recommendation to send it back to the, you know, if I need to make a motion for that, I will. Recommendation to send it back to the newly formed, or what will be ultimately be the newly formed Board of Health, and I think that's also pending whether or not we actually get a formal resignation from Sharon Hart.
Well.
Which is depending a lot of things there. Like what that, what is the composition of that board right now? I mean, we know that Sharon, Charlie.
Well, the majority of them are voting for them, yes, they're not even on the board anymore.
Yeah, they're not even on the board.
But they may be voting, you know, if Sharon leaves, they're going to be voting for another member.
Right.
Okay, so can we ask them to review it in light of the new board members, but also the state interest in regionalizing? Might be a good time for them to look at all of that stuff. So would that be our recommendation to the Board of Health? I mean, it's only a recommendation, but at least it shows what our thought process is.
Yeah. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. Did you want to vote on that recommendation, or you just want to pass it along through?
I think we should put it in the minutes. Yeah, that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
Do we need a recommendation for that, or can we just memorialize that we're requesting the Board of Health to review this once they reform?
Their board.
In light of the new members, as well as reviewing if regionalization is a viable option.
I would put it in the form of a motion. So I will second that motion.
That was my motion. I'm happy to do that. I'm fine, but that's fine. Yeah. I think it'd be a good time to review it. Until that, that motion, that thought came up, I was going along with, well, let's let the town do it, but let's let the Board of Health do it, because they have, if I can say.
Brand new board, I mean, let's figure it out.
Yeah, it'll sell itself, like all the.
No, and then it will go before the town at that point in time anyway.
Right, right.
Well, maybe.
If that's what they.
I mean, if they, if they, if they put it forward, but if they don't.
They have like at least three options. I can, I go.
Yeah. And also, I think we should be paying attention to what the Department of Revenue had recommended for our town.
Yeah.
I think it's fiscally responsible.
Yeah, even if they say no, at least they've looked at it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we, we go ahead and make a motion, then, someone make a motion, then, efficient. Did we already vote?
We already made the motion. I made it.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. So we don't have to do anything with the community preservation funding. They represent themselves, and we do not do anything about that. And the last is Article seven, amended general town bylaws. Article seven, restriction on issuance of local licenses or permits. This is to address the shorter timeframe. Instead of 12 months, it's.
Well, this is open-ended, but I will say that I will have a policy for you for the 22nd, for the meeting before the special town meeting, that basically says that that time period that goes along with this will be.
Six months.
Six months, or, yeah.
Well, how come it's not in there now?
Well, town councils, well, I didn't have time to write the policy.
Oh, okay.
And town council's recommendation was not to include it in the bylaw, but to do it as a policy. And the other thing I'll put in the policy is, just in case this doesn't pass, is if Article seven of the special town meeting passes, this policy will go into effect.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So it's covered.
Yeah, by approval of the Attorney General and posting by the town.
Yep.
So then I move to approve Article seven for inclusion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just a question, the, the section two at the bottom, that's part of that or not?
It's, this is the entire current bylaw, although the amendments are only the section one. It's, section two is so short that I thought I was, we were better off actually including it in case someone asked, well, what's the rest of the bylaws say?
I'll just sit you in there. Do you need a permit for bicycles?
Yep.
Could you what with them?
Ride them like you do.
No way.
Trapping.
You don't. You don't need to ride them like I do.
It says shall not apply.
Right.
It's really the permits for building and things like that. Do they have to do with housing taxes and that sort of thing?
Buildings, zoning, those types of things. Yeah, licensing.
Okay, I think we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then lastly, is the recycling one that's gone back and forth a few times between the highway superintendent and the, or the health town bylaw, new article solid waste recycling. It has the fees that we have proposed. Is there any other changes from last?
No, the last look included the definitions, which town council added to section three, so it has not changed since the last time, just for instance.
And it has third offenses on the fiscal year. Forty-five and fifty. I have a question. Have the stakeholders been notified of this, or is it a state recommendation that they're aware of it because it's been recommended for the entire?
They should, they should.
They should be up on it?
Aware of this, yeah. I mean, if they assume any other community besides Southampton, it's already in place in those other communities.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to include Article eight, amended one, solid waste recycling by law.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And actually, lastly, the, I think it's the last one. Article nine? Adopt clause master of law, section five provisions, veteran exemption. Yeah, I saw Jerry here, but I don't see him here now. So this is the provision, veteran exemption, reducing resident requirement. So at one point, the state requirement was, I think, five years. There was discussion back then about whether or not we would reduce it. I think that we were asking questions of the state bylaw. In the meantime, the state reduced the residency requirement to two years, and so this article is asking if the town votes to reduce the residency requirement for, to one year. And just so you know, the, all these, so this basically and primarily relates to if there's a widow.
A widower.
A widower.
Yeah.
Yep. There'd be a reduction in the taxes and the residency requirement.
Taxes go to zero, don't they? They go to zero?
Yeah, at least on property taxes, yeah.
Yeah. But on the bottom here, it says, you can't separate and have it only be about that particular exemption.
Right.
It has to include all these other exemptions. So I do have a copy of the, I got it from the assessor's office today. I have a copy of all the other exemptions, so the 22A, B, C, D, E. And so what, if anybody wants to take a look at it, it's, it basically classifies, they focus a lot on, very specifically, on disability. So one is 10% disability, veterans who are awarded a Purple Heart, another one was, you know, loss of certain body parts, another one is, so basically, they go through, as the VA often does, with being very specific about different types of disability, and the exemption is different depending on what classification of disability you have. So from 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, it's all different classifications of disability, and then, of course, the primary one that's generated a lot of discussion in town is about the surviving spouse. It applies unless that person gets remarried. So it only applies if the person does not remarry.
So you're saying if a veteran lost a limb, they would get less of a deduction?
Yeah. Let's take a look at this, because it actually, can you see how it says the exemption would be 400 versus 750 versus 1250?
Gotcha.
And what Martha explained to me today is that, she went down the list, she said, no one currently, no one currently, no one currently, you know, so she went through, was best, you know, off the top of her head, with, yes, a couple people are exercising that exemption, so. So this relates to a lot of different exemptions for veterans.
And so some of them, the 22A, B, C, they're not a lot of money, 400, a thousand.
Yeah.
But that's only if they don't meet that year.
Right.
And the Board of Assessors was correct back in 2018, as you will see, the language to actually accept this that we got from town council is substantially different than what was on that.
They were just being cautious about the state law language.
I just have a question. My understanding was it had to be one complete tax year, not, not calendar year, this doesn't say that.
No, this, this is the adoption of the actual clause. This is the state language, so we cannot amend that in any way.
Okay.
But you are correct that, yeah, it's the full tax year. So if somebody came in and was actually eligible in September rather than July 1st, they have to wait to the following.
To the next July 1st.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many towns in Hampshire County and Hampton County have approved a shorter residency requirement? Can we find that out?
I can try.
Martha said she was going to go on some kind of a listserv or something and ask questions, but, you know, not that everybody would move to a town that has, you know, all these shorter residency thing, but I'm just curious.
I can ask it on the listserv, but it's not.
I think we should know about.
But it's not going to be complete. It's going to be, the town's under 10,000, and whether they respond or not depends on if they got a town administrator.
Plus, it's, the service member has to have lost his or her life, and the remaining spouse hasn't remarried, so there's a couple clicks in there, you know.
And we're talking about the difference of one year to two years.
Right.
After two, they get it anyways.
Right.
No matter where they are.
And the two-year, though, we get reimbursed by the state.
Correct.
Whereas the one-year, the town is putting out, putting out the money for this.
Correct, yeah.
And it's very difficult to determine what the financial impact of this would be. You have no idea, basically, how many.
Well, we hope there's no impact.
We would hope there would be.
You would hope there's no impact.
And we would hope that there would not be a disability either.
No, I agree.
Yeah, so.
But I think we should put it before the voters, and I'll make the motion when it re-accept it.
I'll second it.
Second by Francine. All those in favor?
Aye. And if you would please not just put in Article one or Article two with some description of each, because anything after four or nine is now going to change.
Everything after three? I already have one.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's it? Okay, we have all.
Robert's got something.
Yes, thanks.
And I'm going to go make an amendment to this, reformat and all that, and bring you back up the silent floor.
Thank you. Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. The town moderator has the annual town meeting article information session at seven here, downstairs, first floor, town hall, on Thursday, October 17th. So it's a Thursday right before the Tuesday of the year's special town meeting, and everyone's invited to attend.
Seven o'clock?
What time? Seven. Thank you.
And obviously, that'll be televised.
Yes, live.
It must be the 17th or something.
BYOPC. Bring your own popcorn.
I would say it's too late to guess that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I don't know if there's anything we can continue to go, if you want to take a five-minute break until he comes back, what's your preference? Five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay.
Five-minute break. Really? Why do we, do we need him?
Yeah, I was going to say, keep going.
Well, we've got to go to the lab. Turn this off, okay?
Yes, you should.
It's off.
I don't know. You want to turn it off?
Cut it off.
Live.
Resuming the October 2nd, select meeting, and we'll wait for Ed to come back with the actual warrant for Lucy to take, but for now, let's see, we can go ahead and, do the warrants, yeah? Am I going to have to do that?
No.
Question about, actually, what are the warrants? But go ahead.
Okay. Warrant, payroll warrant, P 20-12 for $289,150.47. Payroll deduction warrant, 20-12 for $46,961.28. Payroll deduction warrant for $93,025.18. And then vendor payment warrant, 20-11 for $90,430.1.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question? The PD-20-12A, it says additional union dues? It's $93,000 for a union dues?
I, no.
I seem like a little liar.
I see what it says. I think the notation, it may include union dues. I don't think that, the detail should be here.
877.
So you're looking at?
Union dues are, probably, union dues are $3,162.50.
It may, that's, that may be, we're just getting more specific.
Yeah, there's taxes and everything.
More detail.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions about the warrants? Francine, are you the one who signed the warrants?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we do the zip to barn?
In every, yeah, in every instance this time. And they were also co-signed by Ed, which is, they got that at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, right, right.
I did just make the error.
Formality.
Okay. Select board approve change of an additional sliding door to the zip to barn. That is town property overseen by the Conservation Commission, and that was replaced by the Fletcher's, who are currently renting it. There are pictures of it. It looks very nice. Does it sound like a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve it.
No, second.
Are they going to paint it?
Yes.
They've got a base coat on it, but they're going to.
But it was white last night when I got it.
Yeah, they've got the primer on it. They're going to do the red. I talked to.
Chris, did you second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, second, sorry.
All those in favor? Aye. Let's switch over and approve the minutes. Or do you want, are you going to?
I was hoping you were going to ask for questions on that one, and I kind of was slow on the uptake. On the door, I just want to make sure, because last time we did it, and it might have been with this particular contractor, we didn't use prevailing wages. We had an issue where they had sued us and to get the money back and all that. They had a last act.
But the Fletcher's paid for it themselves.
Yeah, the Fletcher's paid for it.
They paid for it themselves.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter. We just questioned prevailing wage, that's all.
Yeah, we didn't do it. But this is, yeah. We didn't do this. We didn't, we didn't, this is our project.
But it's town property, so does that exempt it?
The leasing did it, so, yeah, that exempts it. I'm not getting prevailing wages sitting here right now.
You don't get anything sitting here.
Funny, I don't actually. And basically, this is, I'm there because of some provisions of the lease that.
Somebody's doing a new town.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably longer than Kind of Kind of a Buggies, but they did a nice job. That's why I went out and took the pictures of it. And the new door on the left matches the new door on the right, but Kind of approved it, and we thought because of the way everything was worded, that the Board of Selectmen should also basically give, approve or give them authorization to do it all, so.
But you're, you're sure on the prevailing wages?
Yes.
Okay. If yours.
There's a new copy for you.
There you go, and signed it.
Wow, you guys are quick.
We are.
Yep.
You won the rubber, too, but he took off. New copy for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And do we have to, um, do we have board to discuss about the bylaws advisory committee?
No.
The bylaws committee met.
No, we're meeting tomorrow.
So you can take the, but I do have a question on it. I'm going to get to that. Go ahead.
And here defines a quorum as four out of five.
Thanks.
Isn't it three out of five?
Majority.
Majority, yeah.
Majority would be three out of five.
Well, and here it says, in this draft, it says, a quorum, majority of four.
Because you're going to six, you're not going to five. You've got five appointed members, and then a town clerk, which is a voting member, which takes you to six.
Okay, thank you.
And that's kind of rounded it from three to four.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't specify in here that, oh, yeah, it says town clerk shall be ex officio voting. You're right, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, that's probably one of the reasons I made it a point to actually put a quorum in there, too. I goes, because, oh, we got five appointed members, so that would really be three, but we've, we basically said the town clerk will be an automatic voting member, so that takes you to six.
I got you. Okay, that's fine.
So if you, if the bylaws committee can just let Ed and I know whether the appointment.
So you want us to choose between the choices of A, B, and C?
Do you have any number of numbers on that?
On the document, let's pretend, do you want us to come back to you with a response, whether it's A, B, or C?
That's fact, for the select board, but the select board would like your comments and what you think.
Yes.
Who breaks tie votes?
Pardon?
Who breaks tie votes? Tie vote is a no vote. Same as in the past. Doesn't go to the runner. No, it does not.
So just let us know then.
Okay, next time, decisions are, some of these can be finalized.
Maybe not on the 22nd of October.
Just a quick question, because on the multiple choice, there's just a small wording difference, or one says amendments, and then the other one says amendments or additions. I was just wondering why that peculiar, I mean, to me, an addition is an amendment, but it's not the same thing?
Because I'm a peculiar guy. And I probably, and I probably wrote the two responses or choices on probably two different nights, and my brain was working differently.
Because I was looking very hard to see what the difference was, and all I found was one word, something.
Okay, we'll go to the bylaws committee, and then you're going to let us know what your recommendations are on the November meeting.
At a November meeting.
Right. Okay. The next is the award of contract highway department. Now, last time we looked at this, it was a 2020 freightliner dump load truck, but the question that came up had to do with the warranty, and would Randall address that? I thought we voted on it anyway.
Well, you signed it, but everyone said, I want, we want to see the warranty to make a decision.
Okay.
I was kind of.
But I thought we made the decision based on some information you gave us.
No, you.
Here, Randall texted.
You texted Randall?
Yeah, but you still said we want to see the warranty, so I left it open, and I was kind of hoping that each one of you individually might have responded back to me when I sent the.
You didn't tell us.
The email out, one did, so I was not taking it for granted that everybody was good with that, so I just brought it back to the fact of, okay, are you good with what was presented for warranties and the differences, so we can proceed or not?
I thought we did.
We voted on it last meeting.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, we did, too. I think it was just a question, we got it answered.
23rd? We wanted more clarity on that.
17th, September 17th. Should we just redundant vote? Keep going? I mean, if you just basically vote that you're all comfortable with the information on the warranties and Randall's recommendation.
I don't want to be redundant, that's all.
Yeah. But if she could just confirm that we did vote, and if we did, then I'm comfortable with it.
And the other stuff, special town meeting and.
Yep, that's all.
Award of contract, you made a motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Rowland, I can't read everything, you did approve it, conditional on seeing the warranty added, yeah.
So we saw it, so we don't have to vote on it again.
Yep, okay.
You're welcome. I know you. Five of you are trying to stick me. I'm going to send that contract out, we're going to get the truck, and you're going to use it to fire me, I know it.
We got plenty, don't worry.
Yeah, it's true.
So we're all set.
Okay, any other necessary business that can't wait till the next meeting? No. Ed, I will say that for the, not the next meeting, which is 10/22, but one of the November meetings, other than bylaws coming back to us, it was mentioned tonight about Hendricks' family would like to talk about the donation of their land, Art Lawrence, if he's available to be officially recognized, also the fireman that retired after many, many, many years, if he's willing, John didn't think that he would be willing to come and be acknowledged in front of the town, but if he's available. And also, I've already spoken to, I haven't heard back from Homerson's office yet, but Lindsey Sabadosa would be very interested in coming to a select board meeting in November and talk about what's happening at the state level and about the bike and other bike trail and other things.
Now, let me ask you a technical question.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from Mr. Hendricks, or do you want a, would you like a formal letter of specifically what they're offering the property to the town for, beforehand?
Yeah.
I would, too, because I'm starting to hear different things.
Yeah, and I know with that, I think that there's, you know, it's, it's a town that decides whether to accept the donation, and I know that there are parameters around that and it, although, well, I'll leave it at that. Okay.
There's another thing for a meeting in Hope, early November, we were trying to schedule a joint meeting with the MPI so that they could go over and present their full priorities.
Or maybe the second meeting in November.
And then, one thing I'd like to bring up, it'll come up under the PRFs or PCS with the chief, but there's an official PCF to appoint a lieutenant who's going to be the second-in-command tonight. I would kind of like to maybe start a new little practice here, and even though it won't be for the actual appointment, at probably our next official meeting, not the one before the town meeting, I'd like to have the chief bring Lieutenant Grover in for a presentation. You know, his family can come, what have you, but I would like the, I would like the board, I know some of you know, already know, but I think it would be a nice thing.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea. Okay, so now we're up to PCFs. No, 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 we do have the police council consortium bid.
No, that was the highway truck, yeah.
Okay, yes, and, okay, and then we're up to PCFs. Are there any changes on the PCFs from what we got in the packet?
No, or the PRFs.
Oh, the ones, do you have ones with signatures from?
Finance.
The finances, they sign up?
Yes, because finance met last night.
Okay, and they sign up on all of them?
Yes, they did.
Okay, okay. So the first one, then, is the PRF for the Public Safety Communications Dispatcher, new position of 16 hours per week, and this is to, you know, overtime is always a good thing.
Always a good thing.
I move to approve the PRF.
You want to come up? This is, do you have any questions?
If you folks do.
You mind? Come on up. So far back there, we can't see you.
Yeah. I move to approve the PRF for the Public Safety Communications Dispatcher.
One second.
So this question, so it's a reduction of overtime expenses, so the money being used is coming from overtime, so it's not going to affect your budget at all?
It's actually, the communications department doesn't have an overtime budget, it comes right out of wages.
Okay, so we'll increase your wages.
We'll increase the wages, no, no, we're simply reducing the wages.
Eight to 12, eight to 16 hours a week, non-budgeted general fund, signed off by everyone, was motioned as a second?
Now, is the source of funds general fund?
Yes.
Operating budget.
Yeah, from the police department, dispatchers operating budget.
That's probably, that's probably the expense account lines of Britain, huh? I was hoping to help give you some of that extra $270,000.
You're trying to give. Find a lot of things to do.
Yes. Any other questions?
No, I just, I just want to say that, looking at the position as it's written here, amongst the ones that we also have to look at, other ones, this one, I at least appreciate the level of detail in terms of what the job is all about, just the skills that are required, but especially what the, what the job is all about, having that in the advertisement, in posting, or whatever it would be.
Sure.
I think is great, so that's, it's well-written, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think there's a motion, was there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, you have another, just, we want a PCF from Mark Grober, like Ed just said, the police department, promotion of police lieutenant, full-time benefits. And that has also been signed off by, find you a very nice letter, too, by the way, that's nice to personalize.
Was Mark the lieutenant?
He was a sergeant.
Oh, okay.
He was a sergeant on.
Night shift?
Night shift, yes.
No, he went to daytime.
And then, you know.
Okay.
The reason, you have to leave.
Yeah, so now he's going to lieutenant?
Yes.
That's nice. Glad he's doing well.
Good.
Okay, I move to approve the motion of Mark Grober.
To lieutenant?
Police lieutenant. John seconded, all those, any questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. If he came in.
While the chief's here, just, sit down. Just one thing, just one thing that I forgot to write in my report, because it's kind of out in limbo, but since Ian's here, I'm going to take some liberties and just let you know. We continue to be in a black hole with the total cruiser and insurance. They've come back to us and said, well, here's what we have it valued at, but we have no information on a 2020. And that could be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 short of what an actual replacement is in an SUV. I've pushed the matter and said, well, jeez, if we can't transfer this equipment, which is part of your assumption to get to dollar Y of what they've given us for an estimate, I goes, I would think that you would have to replace that, because we have replacement coverage on the cruiser. And they kind of said, well, if you find that, you can come back to us, and we can, we adjust. So the window's open, but there don't really seem to be any much information on 2020s out there as of yet. So we don't even know probably what the real price is, we don't know for sure what can and can't be transferred from a 16 to a 20. I kind of gave Ian a little bit of a hard time today, because he's doing what I asked. I asked him to, well, I goes, let's try to push the subject, reach out to Emmett at HQ, where we can get either under the state contract, or Boston Police Council, or one of the other councils, and ask them what they've got for information, and can they give us a quote on a 2020? And can they tell us if they know yet what could be transferred from a 16, if and it can, what's that price? And if it can't, what the price of a new piece of equipment to replace that new would be, so we know where we're going, and we can have a serious discussion with the insurance company. Ian also, being a good manager and trying to have multiple paths, basically reached out also and said, can you give me quotes on what you might have in stock on a sedan, an SUV, or a pickup truck? And I've, kind of, I said, that's good, it's good to have a backup, I goes, but I've told him, I really want to, once we know for sure what a 2020 class and what can be transferred and not, I goes, I'd really, I'd rather try to have that argument with the insurance company of, you owe us more money, and even if we come up short somewhat, I'd probably rather put back into the police department the real equipment that they need to do the job, rather than saying, well, God, we don't have enough to do the SUV or the pickup truck.
What can we afford?
Let's do, let's do the sedan, you know, because I drove a Crown Vic around for a couple of years, and I actually turned it back in because of the rear-wheel drive, and the wintertime is a municipal vehicle, and said, I'm just going to drive my own, so.
You wouldn't be surprised in the police officers' responses of the loss of the Crown Vic. That's a car that, you know, but in essence, really, you know, it was more of or less looking for options. What are the, what are options, what are the costs? Because what happens if they can procure a car that's a 2019? I'd rather 2019 than the 2020, because it's a different, it's a, they're changing their model.
That's the issue here.
You know, when you get a new model, oftentimes, there's things you got to iron out with the new model, so if they can come up with a 2019, I'd prefer the 2019.
What sedan are they using now?
They're using a hybrid right now, from what I understand, my research is, but that's what I, that's what, those were some of my.
So is that the Chargers, not the Crown Vics, or anything like that anymore?
No, no.
And does the replacement value include being able to switch to a pickup or a?
Not necessarily, they just, no, no, it doesn't. It would be the, they would.
Use the money you spent.
On the actual, it would be an Explorer, or the utility that we have, I think we need that, because that's what would be replaced. But, you know, again, it's one of those, I'm not quite sure what they're going to give us, and I just want options, what options, what do you have, you know, should that, should that not occur, but.
You may want a pickup truck, because it's going to be a better vehicle, who knows? It's up to you.
Great, well, thanks for the update.
Yeah, I figured as long as he was here.
And I did want to mention that the $13,000 that we got back from reimbursement from ever source.
From ever source, yeah.
Yeah, that actually, you know.
Big difference between 1,800, which was, I think, their original.
And I did a short evaluation this afternoon of that, if, you know, we still save money in the community, as a community, because, you know, if we didn't go the detailed route, just that one night, we saved about $700 of, you know, because it would have been in wages. So, you know, while we didn't get the amount that the details were, we still, budget-wise, it helped us. And it's their responsibilities, and I still feel to this day, this, you know, that they should have paid off it, but.
Yeah, and I think that mediation, the meeting definitely helped.
So, yeah, it probably won't happen again.
No, you know, we had that minor windstorm, and it worked out, it worked out well, so So I think, you know, everyone's on the same page now.
Yeah, that's good.
After that.
Right, thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, let's take the town clerk's office, the assistant town clerk, 20 hours per week, so Lucy can.
She just ordered supper for her.
All right. Mine isn't as over as Ian's, I apologize, sorry. And it's only for 19, and up to 19 and a half hours. It's not 20 hours and it is non-benefited. And the only thing that was.
Yeah, that wasn't the question.
Put the hour and a half back in. It was 18 hours when I was doing the job, but because there's so much coming up in the next year that I wanted to raise it to an hour, and it doesn't, it necessarily won't go up to 19 and a half, but I wanted that in there, just to have that there.
And that's in the budget, right?
Yes.
I feel better if it's in non-benefited just because of the problems that we had.
It does say part-time, non-benefited.
Not on the actual PRF.
Let's reclassify it's in the budget, only because some of the conversations already taking place tonight. Don't forget, it may be in the budget because we've also had a period of time where someone hasn't filled the position. So that if you take that rationale and then say, well, yeah, next year is a full year, it's not really the same.
So should it be less than 19.5 then?
No, I think, I think it's, I just wanted to make that comment. Like Lucy says, it might be 18 hours a week, but she's putting in here, you know, 19 and a half if it's needed. The 19 and a half still falls below the threshold of its event.
Yeah, except for the commentary next to it. Which is the same thing as the COA driver.
No, 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 no. Please understand this. If you've got someone that works 19 and a half hours for 46 weeks out of 52 a year and they work 22 hours for that six weeks, that's still non-benefited. And that's what these people are saying, is that occasionally it might go over that, but it's not normal.
Right. It will never, it probably will never go over 19 and a half. But there are times when there's election time.
Until it goes over the average, until this allows for the average to creep. My read of this, it says impossibly more during elections. I'm not trying to be a hardass on this. But it means that it's under the discretion of whoever's responsibility that is. And that responsibility could bump it over to the average and then we end up in the same position.
Was that something Lucy, that's what the department had?
I just wanted to.
And I have, I have an election budget.
Look at this one right here.
I don't like this form either. This isn't the real form that we're using now. This is the old form. This was filed before the new form, so. I think this is a form from two forms ago.
That's the form that I got. Well, that's the form I got.
This says April 2015 at the bottom. That's where this was from.
That's the one I got from, in the break room, so.
I still would feel better, I'm just looking at the council aging one that says right on it, no benefits. I would feel better if it said that, if you're anticipating that at any given point in time it might be more than 19.5 hours in a week. We just went through this with the van driver.
But is that an issue with you, Lucy? Put that there?
No, it's fine.
Yeah, she'll just put it on.
I will, yeah.
Put it on there initially.
I'm gonna put it in the posting, no benefits. And it's part-time.
Yeah, it says in the posting. Is this what you're actually post? What it has right here or this right here?
Yes.
Only because.
I thought I put non-benefited on.
You did, but if you're gonna post this, do a spell check, there's a couple words.
I don't think we need to have that language in there at all and possibly more during elections. Like you can let it float up, it's 19.5 hours per week, period, end of sentence. Like we don't need that extra arrow.
Assistance and arrows.
And I would.
Does anybody else agree with this?
No, I hear you.
Like if she, if under your discretion, you're allowed to float occasionally above 9.5, 19.5 hours, then period, end of sentence. It's number of hours, 19.5. We don't need that arrow in that explanation, which basically I think exposes the town to risk. And if you can float above that, then that's fine, as long as the average.
She can unless it says this. If you take that out, it's 19 and a half, period, you can't float up.
He's talking, I think he's talking about the PRF.
This allows you then to float above the average. I don't agree with you.
He's talking about the posting. Are you talking about the posting?
No, I am upset with this PR, I'm upset with this PRF that basically, that basically exposes the town to the same thing that the COA driver does. If this thing creeps up over average, over 20 hours a week, we are into a benefited vacation position. Like period, end of sentence based on the way that this is.
Like taking that out, it'd be like any other position. If you've got 40 hours in there and you okay 42 hours one week, it is what it is, you have to make up somewhere else, that's all. So you're saying take that out and it'd be fine?
I'm not comfortable with having that language in there personally. And I'm not, I'm also not comfortable with it not saying.
That's not gonna go over 19 and a half because we won't pay it.
They will be paid, they just end up paying the council of aging that was covering, I mean, basically there was an email from the county. They end up paying it because she ended up working it.
Just exception. But what Lucy's saying is.
I needed assistance.
Yeah.
I know you do.
And I've gone, for the first four months out of this year, first four months out of this year, I did the job myself.
Yeah.
And then for three months.
Yeah, doubting how much.
That has nothing to do with the need for the position. This is just.
The other issue with the Viantr was that one form said one thing, another one said another thing. There was no consistency. We're trying very hard to say it has to be signed off before it gets here. We shouldn't be the backstop on these, you know, it should, they should be self-consistency.
Yeah.
Is it okay on the position of vacancy then to say there's possibly more hours during election season?
That's what I'm saying.
I'm glad you brought that up.
It's coming out of the elections budget. It's not coming out of the assistant town clerk budget, it's coming out of the elections.
Okay. But I think my only comment aside from a couple types is I would just like to see five bullet points about what the main job is, you know, or maybe they need, for the computer, if they need, I don't know, do they need spreadsheet experience or, you know, something, or anything, I mean, just to get a little bit.
I mean, the PQB is responsible for that, but they are responsible.
They need to be good with the public.
Yeah.
She's got that. Provide assistance, assistance is called on. And then the two on the bottom.
Am I right by looking at the PQB form here? The hourly rate is between 1102 and 2489. Does that much of a spread right at the bottom?
Yeah.
Geez.
That's not helping.
Right down here. How could there be that much of a spread?
Yeah, I agree with you. Could somebody be interested in making a motion?
I'll make a motion, yeah. Well, Matt, why don't you make a motion with what you want to see taken out of the edges?
I feel like it's still up to for discussion because that is not.
We can still discuss it. So why don't you make a motion and then we'll discuss it.
I make a motion to send this back with removing the language that states that it allows it to float above.
Sending it back? Well, she's right here.
Well, it has to be signed off by each board.
I've been told by the PQB that we cannot change these forms.
Yeah, we can't.
He's absolutely right.
Yeah, it's gonna have to go back through the process.
I will send it back, I will do it.
That's the procedure. If we do this, that would be the procedure.
Can you want to take off a possibly more during election work?
I just don't like the language that allows you to say.
And take off that piece and approve it, or it has to go back to the equipment?
It doesn't say non-benefited on here.
I'm saying I would like it to say non-benefited and also remove that piece there and ask the department to manage the hours. Do we need to send it back to PQB to do that?
I think you do. If the form gets revised, it's gotta go back through that process.
No, well, in a way, it's supposed to make changes to these forms, is what I meant.
And then you're gonna be using the brand-new form now?
No. This is the.
This would be an exception that I'd be willing to address this on the 22nd of October. This would be an exception that I would be willing at the one-hour meeting before the town meeting. So it won't delay it any longer.
Well, funny, it's a meeting that night, the question is, will PQB be made before?
Let me ask you a question.
Did anybody ever second that?
No. Let me ask you a question because I'm feeling bad about holding this up.
I am too, I am too, I just don't.
Can we post the position, can we approve the notice of position vacancy so she can post it and then on the 22nd approve the PRF as to the exact details? That way she can post it, get the process going, and we would approve the PRF on the 22nd.
I don't want to delay this in any way, shape, or form. I just don't want to be held liable for this later.
Yeah, but that's what I'm trying to get to. She's already been without somebody.
I don't think I can post it without being signed on. No. And I am fine because it's a quiet time right now.
So you're okay with that?
Well, I'm, I've been doing it.
If it's been possible to address it the next week, I'd rather that. But I do think it needs to say non-benefited, and I think it needs to actually not have it be so variable with a possibility of consistency going over. If it wasn't that we just ran into a big problem with this, it probably wouldn't be as big of a deal.
So is that your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Would someone like to second the idea that we'd like to revise this to say non-benefited and remove the arrow and have it be at 19.5 hours per week?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Just a thought, if we get this back quicker than we think and we need three of us to come together quickly, I'd be glad to volunteer.
It'll depend on the other committee's meeting.
Yeah.
So what if it helps?
We want it to work, Lucy. That's the main thing.
Yeah, the concern is that'll, it'll trigger something down the road.
Okay, we ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have anything else with us? I don't think so.
You've been here a while.
Thank you so much for being here.
It's not my salary. It was this. This is extra hour. Have a good night.
Take care.
Okay, let's go to the van driver. On-call backup position. This one does say on-call as needed, no benefits. As we heard tonight, this is coming out of the state formula grant. The ceiling amount is $1,000. This one is anticipated to be 60 hours for 780. It's 19.5 hours a week. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve of.
Second?
Second.
Francie and Matt.
Have a good one, Lucy.
Yeah, no, and again, I think just, this is just, I just like the way these are laid out. This is the way it should be in terms of professional working.
These hours aren't included in our thing, Lucy. I'm not bad for her, but that's part of being elected, so.
True. Anyway, I mean, I think that, you know, the duties and the minimum qualifications, I think these are the way, if we're gonna advertise something professionally as a town, I think this is the way it should look. And I would hope that people would be a little bit more consistent.
We need HR.
I know. But this, these are good examples of it, others should be able to follow and, you know, modify their own a little bit.
All those in favor? Aye. Now we can go to the water commission who's looking for an administrative assistant.
Can I ask a question? It kind of relates to the clerk. Where, where did we end up when we voted to make the clerk the treasurer?
You never voted to make him one.
Didn't we go and tell me to get that passed?
And it didn't pass.
Oh, you'd be appointed.
It didn't pass the election.
Oh, okay.
It didn't pass the election.
Didn't pass the election?
Right.
Boy, I thought you did.
That guy stands out there all the time.
And I would probably.
Don't give up your right to vote.
Right, I would probably recommend that you bring the treasurer collector position back individually for.
Go for one way.
For the winter special town meeting and the following election.
To make an appointment.
Make an appointment, just keep hammering away, don't tie the two of them together to get, you know, double the null votes.
Take one at a time.
Take one at a time, yeah. And if you go back and look at the vote, you'll notice that the treasurer collector position came much closer to being approved, even though it failed, than the town clerk did.
That's interesting.
It could be because who was in it too, but, you know.
Well, it could also be that our, all of our hammering away at these are professional positions, they need certain, you know, background education, you know, blah, 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 is at least sinking in on people saying, well, yeah, that person's handled $17 million. Yeah, exactly. You know, versus the person that's give.
Are you appointed?
Excuse.
Oh, I'm appointed, yeah.
Excuses versus the person that's doing, versus if it's on. Except, believe it or not, her position as town clerk has a totally tremendous legal responsibility to it, so.
Oh, huge.
Yeah. It's not as much financial, but total legal when you wrote that one.
Do you remember Mohammed or Islam?
Mohammed.
The Witsi Town.
Yeah. We're up to the water. All right, let's move on to the water commission administrative assistant, up to 10 hours a week.
This is the administrative assistant?
Again, they should say non-benefited. It says up to 10 hours per week, a pretty high pay skill salary compared to other administrative assistants, I think, part-time, up to 10 hours per week to set up and maintain office.
Isn't this where they have somebody to go in there that's working elsewhere?
I mean, I have some issues with this frankly. I mean, I, first of all, I would not go any higher than what PQB recommends as their median range, which is 60, 90 an hour. But then, as I keep talking about what I like about job descriptions and the things, we have this job description that is three pages long with all sorts of things from finger dexterity on down, which I don't quite understand how that one got to be like that, or who wrote this, but.
Well, this is the template for the PQB.
And for an administrative assistant position.
Yeah, but it goes into such detail, I guess is my point, I'm not getting, but then, to me, this is where the notice of position has no relationship to this job because the way I'm looking at this job, it's talking about, somewhere in here, where did I read it? Um, da-da-da, um, something about financial management and statistical, statistical analysis, knowledge, so needs some practical, knowledge of principles and practices of financial management and statistical analysis and research.
Knowledge of skills.
Right, and then I'm looking at the essential functions and its responsibility for taking minutes at the monthly board meetings and other administrative duties.
Answering the phone or record keeping.
And, yeah, and this one's got, this one has typos as well, in terms of 60 pounds and 20 pounds of weight to move boxes or whatever. I, yeah, this I think is.
It's contradictory in that their skill does not match.
It doesn't match.
The function of the job.
No. It really doesn't.
I feel like this falls under the responsibility of.
PQB in the finance department.
No, like, I mean, this falls under a position that already exists. Why do they need this? I don't get why we need to add this.
The whole position to town.
The whole position. Do we have authority over that or not?
They have authority over there to do this.
They don't have anybody to do this.
Who's doing it right now? It's a new position, so who's doing it right now?
Yeah, they're doing the minutes themselves. They have nobody answer the phones.
Why can't they keep it?
Well, actually, the phone calls go to the highway. The highway administrative assistant does their bills and stuff like that for the, then Tom puts them on a spreadsheet for a summary. What they're specifically out looking for is someone to do the minutes at their meetings, which I totally concur with, and they're trying to set up an office and get filing done over there.
Doesn't their board do the minutes at their meetings? Why doesn't the board do their minutes?
I don't think they've got a phone over there.
This one says, I mean, in the job description, it does say that, and assisting taxpayers with their questions, taking minutes and record keeping support, opening mail.
So what it says versus what you know it's gonna be is different, yeah.
Well, between that and then what's written here, the notice of the position.
Yeah. Of course, that's the, that's the water department. Aren't they always interesting?
They gotta help people write things to be posted.
I guess my concern is when we have job titles that go across departments like administrative assistant, and I see a range of salaries from department to department, I just, I'd really like to see a spreadsheet of all of it because we have such a range.
Well, and with a new position, we have a median range here too. This is, you know, this goes from the 11 to $20.
Right, but I'm talking about among the existing.
No, I agree.
Systems.
I agree, but I mean, I think.
I don't think there's that much of a range between our existing.
1899's gotta be pretty high for this.
Oh, I, Rick, it's unbelievably high.
This almost looks like you got somebody already pegged.
Well, it does, they do. I mean, it does not-
Yeah, that's what she makes.
This is not- We can't pay the person a differential wage then? She's got to make whatever she's making now?
That's why I got to throw it back the first time.
Oh, that's okay. Differential wage. And she won't do it for a differential wage, I'm guessing.
Well, no, I think they kind of just, they went at this backwards. They said, oh, questions, yeah. Instead of actually doing a posting with a, with a salary range or a hourly range and then getting people to apply, they did it backwards and said, oh, we'd like this person, let's do the, here.
She's got the job.
Yeah, how much are you making?
How much you make and we'll match it.
Yeah.
Even though there's no, this is like-
Do we have a right to kick this back?
Other issue.
Deny.
Not without sending it back. Can't change the form without sending it back.
I mean, but the interesting part, the PQB recommended a salary mid-range, or set a mid-range, and they signed off on it at this higher rate. So sometimes, they tell us, you got to follow the process and yet-
Well, don't forget, this was signed off at originally with this date, originally before it got to the select board and got kicked back and started the process.
Since 9/3/19.
I'm looking at 8/22/2019.
I'm looking at the PRF, it says 9/3.
Mine says 8/2.
Mine says 8/22.
Mine says 26. Who would say we'd be looking at?
I'm looking at the PRF right here.
8/22.
That's request to start.
Well, that's the start date.
There's the date that was signed.
2020, that's not that far ago, long ago.
Yeah, but the-
It was over a month ago.
The position rating was 9.5.
So was this ever even kicked back?
Yeah, it was kicked back. I don't think, when it got kicked back, I think the PQB did this, because it was asked to, it'd be 11 to 2279, but this was, this is still the original amount that basically the Water Department had filled in there.
And they do have to post this position, right?
They didn't want to do that before. They came to us, said, you know.
Yeah, and I'm now recalling, this is the PQB meeting. The PQB did indicate at that meeting that this was pegged a certain individual and that it was over compensated.
Job description should match the rate, not the person.
Yeah, it's the job description. You can't be paying people by personality. It's got to be by the job.
So do we want to send it back and say we think it's, doesn't, the rate doesn't fit the position? It should be the right rate.
For a brand-new position?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I also think it should say non-benefited. I just want to make that perfectly clear given what we just dealt with.
That should be, that should be a line on this form.
It is on the new form. Nobody's using the new form.
Well, again, this was done before.
So we send it back, tell them to use a new form.
Well, if we stop sending everything back, we'll have the old ones.
They'll just do a new form, since we sent it back.
I'm pretty sure at the beginning of this meeting that we said that an hour of meeting-
Yeah, right.
Once they went personnel, HR.
Do this one. Do this one.
Okay, so we're not making a motion to send it back?
Yes.
Yes.
For what reasons?
Oh, my lord.
Requesting the 1899 rate in it, because it's way past the midpoint of the PQB.
For a brand-new position.
For a brand-new position.
Yeah, we're giving a different rate.
Well, I mean, never mind the position. The rate's been set, 11 to 20. It's-
That's incredible.
It basically should now become, where does the person's qualifications and experience fall within that range? It's not that it's a new position, well, it's got to be 11.
Yeah, so it should show a range, I think. You know, like, the minimum to the midpoint is the way we do it, and based on your experience, you give something in there.
Yeah. Yeah, but you shouldn't exceed the midpoint.
And not let you have a special candidate that you can justify. Okay, so you got all that?
Yeah, what's the motion?
I'm sending it back.
I did say all that.
So then you have a motion and there was a second?
Who did the second? Sorry, you did. Okay, thanks, Sean.
To send it back to reevaluate the amount, the hourly amount, consider a range, and to add non-benefited.
And use a new form.
And use a new form. No concerns by the select board relative to the high rate of pay for a new position.
And can we also just suggest that they modify their position when they post it, the job description? So that it matches whatever the posting, the posting matches more or less the job description than it does the-
And all you have to do is refer them to the knowledge, abilities, and skill section, where it basically says financial management, research, report, methods and techniques. I mean, this is not-
That's the key in Temple.
And just for the ha-ha's, the physical requirements lift up to 60, 20 pounds in weight. So that's like-
60 pounds.
11.5.
Quite a value, isn't it?
So who's on the Water Commission now?
Statuary, don't slather in it.
Maybe there's something in the water.
Tom Alunis and Jim Alunis. No, Tom's the Water Superintendent and Matt Christensen.
Okay, oh, they're going to love us again.
Oh, my lanta.
And now last, there's a PCF for Dennis Senical, Water Department, to get a 2% merit increase. This has come to us before.
Yes.
We had recommended that there be an evaluation done, and that the previous increase that they asked for was a 4% increase, and it was not consistent with the personnel policies.
There is 2% written in the personnel policies. The 2% is allowed, so that's why it was approved at PQB.
This is all, did he get the 2% raise on July 1st?
We asked that last time and they-
Yeah, but that was a cola. That was a cola, and then this is a merit. They're separate things, I know.
And we had asked to see something that showed that the merit was, I mean, to me, the merit was over and above your normal standard duties. And we'd asked to see something that showed that he had been evaluated and he'd done such exceptional work that he was-
We did ask that.
That this was meritorious.
Have we gotten that?
We have this letter right here in the packet, Mr. Lawrence.
He's demonstrated proficiency in fulfilling his job beyond department's expectations. His leadership interfacing with the treasurer collector's office and dealing with meter reading and billing.
And I will say that the collector's treasurer's office is thrilled to be dealing with Dennis in that capacity.
It doesn't show finance having signed off on it. It's just a line form, but no.
That's on all of these forms, but you said that they signed off on all of them.
That's because it was signed last night, Jen. So what you're seeing is what I scanned last week.
Are we going to add a finance line to this?
Yeah, it already has, but-
I move to approve this PCF.
Second.
I come back to, I come back to the set, to the hourly rate. I mean, you have people who head departments who don't make $28.10, and they supervise a number of people. The whole thing, the lack of consistency is troubling.
But you've got certain positions that require certain licenses and whatever that are difficult to find and are competitive.
I understand, but we have an automated meter reading system. It's a drive-by. I don't, I don't, there's nothing technical there.
No, except that it's got to be downloaded, they have to massage the data, then they have to, they do. They, they look at it and they massage the data.
I don't hear that.
Little adjustment here. We're going to kind of back into it. Yeah, a little leaky faucet over here, it looks like.
I think the issue for me is, you know, it's within the personnel policies, they first, you know, PQB approved a 4% raise, which they set the rules.
We didn't approve the 4% rate. It's, it's 4% because of the 2% cola, and then the 2% is written into the policy.
The 2% was already granted, so anyway.
Yes, but it's not the merit. There wasn't a merit increase.
But in the last P-
Taking advantage of the law.
Last PCF asked for an additional 4% above the already awarded cola.
2%, so that was a 6, but now it's 2 and 2, which is within that.
Now it's 2 and 2, but my issue is not so much that, even though I feel like, you know, there's a lot of-
We'd have to change the law.
People can just, you know, change things because it's grant or enterprise fund, as if it doesn't really matter, like it's not our water rates. But I think the issue for me is that when the Department of Revenue reports to the town, when they were looking at all of our financial information, they basically made a point of saying that, that departments should be advised firmly that the annual town meeting is where their budgets will be set and not to expect any additional funding during the year. And I think that, you know, when you, I just think you set precedence, often right, when you decide to do this outside of an annual operating budget.
And I'm sorry I'm going to say this, because you're not going to be happy with me, but once again, on for the July 1st change of the colas and the salaries, they actually put in for, I think it was, I forget if it was 4 or 5% increase for this individual. Jen came to me and said, I'm not going to approve this because the board of selectmen said only 2%. They had included it in their budget. Well, once I said, I agree with you that they have to go through the PQB process, it was, all he got was a 2%. So I'm going to make the argument that actually the intent was, but they hadn't filed the paperwork before July 1st, so this really should have gone in for the new fiscal year. That it's not a mid-year advance, as the U.R. set.
That's an interesting data point.
So this person has been here one year?
I don't know.
Did we have a motion on this yet?
I don't believe it.
Oh, well, I think Matt made a motion, but I think you made a motion to approve it.
Call the vote.
Any thoughts, Chris?
I don't, I just-
You've had some good thoughts, Chris.
No, I guess in my, in my past experience, usually, you know, it's, you don't usually start seeing merit increases until you've been here. Long enough a year, but there's nothing to say that it can't be outstanding in their first year of work, I suppose, too.
Based on performance and anniversary date, that's the reason.
Is it? Well, I guess I don't know. Yeah, I'm assuming that this doesn't, this doesn't set something that, you know, the next time somebody can, this person could get another meritorious, it's got to be a couple of years in between?
No, there's nothing in the PQB that would-
Nothing in the personnel policy that preclude that. It's only a 2% above a cola.
What do you deal with that next time?
Well, this all comes out of their enterprise fund, right, which, as we already said, I mean, it's, you know-
It's our water bill.
It's, it's technically their fund to manage, but it's, it's our water bill, right?
Their budget goes up, our water bill goes up.
Yeah, I, you know.
But they made a point of saying that the rates have not increased and it does not affect the current charges.
Well, at some point in time, it's all accumulated.
Sure.
Right. But right now, it's what, $58 every six months?
And at the town meeting, wasn't there a request to significantly increase the position, $12,000?
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was for the superintendent. Yeah, and that, yeah, that one was-
That was a cost done.
Yeah, that was a part.
I don't know, I'm a little torn. I don't have any great arguments to offer though.
I think that, I think the issue is, is that they're well within the bylaw. And based on what Ed said, I'm with you on the mid-year, but if they, if that's, if what Ed said is true, then-
Yeah, I mean, they did come in.
Yeah, no, it's quite.
But we said, yeah, what is-
I know. He's the one that talked me up. Are you going to let him get away with this?
Assume it to be true. Thank you from Chris.
I'll let Jen back, back me up on that one. No, I'm just saying at the state of, for the record, I mean, they did try to implement a higher increase for July 1st, and both Jen and I were on the same page at that point, is they had not gone through the proper process, and the board of selectmen had, as far as the cola went, it was 2%. That's what was put into this individual's increase at that point in time.
Ready to vote? We have a motion on the floor?
Yep.
One second.
In a second.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, you understand, or?
Yeah, okay.
Just because I'm, well, I give a little one defense here. Okay. Okay, so where does that bring us to? All of the PCFs, PRFs are completed, we did the warrants.
Or sent back, yeah.
Yep, or sent back, and we, we already did the warrants while you were gone, and now we're going to move on to the minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes? Alright, March 19th, let's just do them all together, okay? Start with March 19th. Is there a motion for, actually, let's just look at all of it. Is it any, any corrections or suggestions on March 19th? I do not see anything. Very detailed again, Kathy.
No, yeah?
Did I do this?
Yeah.
No.
No, I was going to say, I don't think I did any, so do I?
Yeah, well, good job.
I'm not that far behind on anything.
Just me.
No, very detailed, including motions by whoever. Everybody okay with these ones? Alright, let's move to the next one then, April 22nd. Also did not have any concerns, long one with all the articles.
Yeah, I'm just, I didn't check, go back and verify the details.
No.
I'm assuming they're correct.
Yeah.
I would just like, since I was not even in the town hall, let alone on the board, abstain from both of these.
Okay. Alright, you want to do them together then, for now? Would it sound like to make a motion for those two?
I move to approve the minutes of 14/19 and April 20, April 22nd.
2nd?
2nd.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we'll look at the August 19th separately.
I would stand. I got it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And this is the one to appoint John Lumber to the school committee. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from August 19th, meeting with the school committee.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Okay, and then, any other, anything else on the pending items? We talked about some of them tonight. The open space recreation plan, nobody's contacted me.
No, I actually reached out to Emily, and she's supposed to send me some possible dates, so I'll be sending you off those next week.
Okay. Because time is marching on, it'll be done by the end of the year. And then the Green Communities Grant, any update on that?
Just the one I had given in my annual report, that that person from the Sudbury that's in the same situation reached out to me. We're going to pool our resources to lobby for that passage.
Can we make a request that, we're not down to 92 yet, are we, where are we? Hampshire Regional Budget.
No, I was just asking, is anything else in any of those? We already got the update on the town hall, so-
Well, any of them, yeah, so the, I like this report from Hampshire Regional and Principal Smitty. Like, a lot. I wish we could also get one for Norris.
Well, I can't, I-
Would you like to request that?
Well, the difference is, yeah, I mean, she does this.
The idea out there, who?
Kristin.
Yeah, I know, so why can't, why can't our principal Pluta do this, do this too? I just feel like this goes a long way, like, this, this explains exactly what's going on, it explains what their problems are, it explains how they, how they're figuring everything out, it explains their shortcomings. I mean, honestly, it really, when it comes budget time, at least you have a history of, of where the problems are. They've documented them ahead of time, so that we don't have to sit there and have this like wide faith trust that they're, that they're not struggling up at the hill. And then conversely, over here at Norris, like, I need, I need, I need, but if you, if you haven't documented the history of need over time, then it's just, everybody needs something, so.
With the Norris School Committee.
I will, I will.
I think it's a great document. I think she's giving us a heads up of what the needs are going to be for next year. She's saying they can't do level funded next year already, so, I mean, we've got to keep-
Yeah, I mean, she's setting the stage for that, but I just feel like I'm-
But she, she, she doesn't just ask for more money, she also demonstrates ways in which she achieves savings.
Yeah, I agree.
So I really appreciate the fact that she does the 360, she just doesn't have, she's a real problem solver. She really is.
She does a great job.
She's very, very good. And her presentation skills, I mean, she present, this is the kind of stuff she presents at the meetings.
Do you think that she does this, or do you think that somebody else does this for her?
I think she does this.
Do you feel that way?
She has a, she has a big hand, she has a handle on what's going on in that.
And she probably consulted Bobby, though, I'm sure.
Oh, I'm sure she has to go back.
I floated this idea out there to Norris.
She has to go back and get the numbers from someone, but I think the concepts and the planning of her site really hurts.
Okay, yeah, because I floated this idea out there, and then a comment was made that Hampshire has more resources on two vice principals and these types of things.
And I think, I think just the organization.
I mean, it was made by, by these, I didn't, subtotally, as I brought it up on a separate conversation.
I will make the point that the fact that Principal Smitty and the business office are in the same building is a big plus, when, I mean, for sharing information versus, you know, Eliza Pluta is down here, and yes, for any information she wants, for financial or whatever, she's got to make a phone call, email, or go up there. I mean, it's not, not quite as simple.
But she explains things, well, she talks about what we're looking ahead, the changes in chapter 70, yes or no. You know, she really gives you a very thorough-
Yeah, it's planning ahead versus reactionary.
Of what, of what is behind all of this.
Well, and organizing the, the main topics that would be of interest to us as well, you know.
But I also agree with that, because, you know, we very painstakingly, like-
I know, that's where I'm going with this.
To fund this language program, it's been funded, I happen to find out from a friend who's a teacher there, how's it going, you know, people had to move around, how many kids are in there. I think it would be great to have a little bit- I think it would be great to have a little bit of information about.
I think we should.
She doesn't have time. I mean, she makes over how much a year.
She was the one that said that. Defense on her behalf.
But do we, I guess the question is, do we dictate, mandate, order, whatever, that we want this? Show her a copy of this and say, we want this?
Now, this is, this is a quarterly report, right?
Yeah, right. That she volunteered to do.
Right.
I mean, it was her idea, it wasn't something that we asked.
She's trying to get buy-in from the town.
Yeah, exactly. She's lobbying, she's lobbying. My view of this is that she's doing, she's doing an excellent job lobbying for her department and for, and for her area. And you know what? She should be doing that because she's the leader of that department and that's what she should be doing. And frankly, all of these departments should be doing this around here, so I'm harping on the school right now, but, I mean, Pluta should be doing this, everybody should be doing this.
Well, let me reach out and see if I can get something that takes you off the hook of being the bad people.
Can we, I mean-
And I won't demand it, I'll just ask you.
I mean, surely she's seen this.
I would think so. I'll send her a copy.
If we get back on track with the reports coming in, you know, coming in to our meetings, this would be the kind of detail that they should be providing anyway. So-
Yeah. They should commit with written stuff, not just the whole presentation.
Oh, yeah. Written, and also we would be getting information that we don't otherwise.
Well, man, talk to Elisa. I mean, you can say the select board requested that you speak to her and we want this report. I mean, she reports up to the select board, I mean, as far as the budget and everything.
I mean, I think that she should, that this is something that she would want and embrace. Like, it shows a history of problems that you're solving, how you're solving them, where you're resource limited, what you're doing to solve these things and-
But what you reported tonight was very good about the school. I mean, it did great detail about how many of the projects they've already, you know, completed. I mean, those are the good things you wanna hear, showing that what's going on. And so it doesn't hurt to have more of that.
But if you had not been at that meeting, we wouldn't have known.
I knew they finished the sidewalks because I saw the belt for the extra work, but other than that, yeah.
That's not the point, too, is she's the leader of the school, she should be reporting something.
Okay. So you have, the plan is that you're gonna pull up her-
I will reach out, yeah.
Ask her if she can provide us with something similar to what you have there.
Yeah, accordingly, basically.
Yep. All right, I think, any other questions about the pending items? Calendar, we already have meetings planned. We already went through the art goals for the town.
Can I ask a question? Did everybody get the revenue and expense reports?
No, that was actually one of my questions about, because I had-
I thought they went out to departments, but we didn't get them.
It was on every single agenda item and I'd asked him to just have it for us a month.
They just went out yesterday, so, yeah.
We haven't reviewed one for a while.
But we haven't reviewed it.
We haven't, but we haven't had one for a while.
How come? Yeah, she's back to the not-
Yeah, right.
I think probably because, just because of the change of the fiscal years.
But that's not a reason.
Yeah.
There's all these reasons with that.
Yeah, I know. Did you ask her to send us all a copy of the most recent sort of new expenses?
I can forward the one that they sent out, my year.
She needs to include the select one and all, every time.
Well, usually you are, so.
No, we're not.